Welcome to the work session for the Village Pleasantville Board of Trustees. Today is Monday, April 24. We have a couple of items on our agenda and the first one is a discussion with Homeland Towers regarding the potential cell tower location and structures.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Glad you're having me back. So I just really want to come tonight, give you an update of where we stand, what I've done in the past couple of months and what I think we can do to move forward. First, just what I've done over the past few months, which I looked at the title, we ran title on the property, we did look into that, the potential easement with the MTA. You know, our analysis of that is that in the agreement with them, the area that they intended to use for their own purposes was not on the lot we intend to use now. There was a portion of the lot we intend to use now, which is part of that, only as in the sense that they were going to relocate garbage cans to that area. So I don't see that preventing us from moving forward at all. We've always worked to relocate the garbage cans in another way.
So is it your belief that if the MTA ever did want to go ahead with that substation, that you could coexist in that space?
Yes, because the space they intend to use has nothing to do with not anywhere impacted by this place.
But what about truck access?
We wouldn't block that at all.
So would they be close to the parking lot venue?
They're actually on the opposite corner of the park.
That was only one piece of it. Right? They had one piece that was at the corner by Manville Road. Is that what you're talking about? That was only one of the two parcels. They also wanted a parcel in that dog leg that goes behind Wells Fargo.
I didn't see that in the easement documents, but I looked at it.
No, there wasn't an easement.
It was just.
Right, that first piece. Right, yeah. So, and I mean honestly, there was a verbal agreement. This however dates back.
Four, five years ago.
More than five years, probably eight years ago. And it's interesting question, but whatever, we diverge. That issue is floating out there, but Con Ed, I mean, Metro North has not proceeded with that and who knows whether it changed environment means they don't need it or it does. Discussion for a different setting.
Well, you know, if we do decide to move forward, we can have a discussion with them to get a better sense of what they intend to use there. Then I would just be on clear as to what they're intended to use for that one.
So let me just, just, I, just to be clear, what they intended at the time was, it was an installation of the first two apartment spaces right next to the bridge at Manville, but also a substantial electrical substation in that dog leg behind Wells Fargo to approximately the size of a tractor trailer box that required truck access.
Well, if they were going to put a whole tractor trailer box in that lot, then yes, we could not pose a.
Okay, so.
We do have the email from October from their director of tran- transaction management, I think it was. Transaction management that said that that was, there was no, there were not, there was no, nothing in the capital plan through 2024 that I didn't.
They don't have the money to do it, so hit them up.
That's where we're at.
Okay, go ahead, Chuck.
So the next aspect was trying to come up with some different stealth ideas here. And if you could bring up my power point, I'd appreciate it.
I will.
Thank you. While I was doing this, I did have Ray Cap and other tower company trying to look to see if there was something custom they could do. One idea came back and it wouldn't work from our perspective. So we really looked at the best existing products that are on the market now and those are some of the ones I intend to show you today. But I think we'd be, would be definitely necessary.
Well, that looks like a big wooden horse, what's that looking?
No, no, approaching horses. So this was just again, to give everybody a sense of where the property actually is that we're talking about. The next slide was just again, our proposed design.
So just for the benefit of people who may be watching, this is the parking lot behind the bookstore and relocation. This is the existing dumpster area.
Yes.
Which obviously would have to get reconfigured.
Yes.
And then this is this dog leg parcel of property that sticks behind the Wells Fargo bank.
Yes.
Okay?
So my goal tonight was to have actual photo simulations to present to you. The two of the companies did provide them back to me, but I wasn't satisfied with them. They were created by the tower manufacturers and I wasn't happy with them. At the end of this, what I'd like to do is propose that we actually move forward with the balloon float and have our proper visual team, Saratoga Associates, come in and do proper visuals. After we booked it, a few potential designs, so you can give me feedback on what you'd like to see. Then we could do a balloon float at a date that works for you, you can actually see the balloon and get a sense of scale. And then from that, have visual rendering created based on the towers that you think.
So a balloon float is a helium balloon brought up to the height of the tower?
Six foot orange helium balloon brought up to where the top of the balloon is the top of the proposed power facility, as close to the tower location as possible. You're in the balloon, I'm not coming. Honestly, honestly, we can work it into whenever, a lot of times boards would like it on the weekends and I can do that. It is hard sometimes with the wind to get.
I mean, I think, right, the more people that see it, the better.
Yeah.
So people are aware of what's coming. Is that your expectation?
Well, yeah, yeah, no, the more question on the public and the more that people know ahead of time, I think the better. So that's what I'd like, we don't have to come up with a date tonight, but then seriously, I could work with Mr. Morrissey, come up with a date that you could potentially notice on your website, so anybody says they know what this balloon is. Kind of like when you, the blue balloons sometimes to some people, but you can notice it to the public, just so they had a sense of what that is.
Does the balloon provide better cell service?
A balloon? No, not yet.
Come on.
You know, they are in some places in Africa, they are trying to put in balloons with some antennas at the bottom, but that won't quite work here.
China tried that.
Well, yeah, unfortunately, that one got away from them, or so they say. So if you can go to the next slide, please. So this is the first one.
So wait, I'm sorry, going back to the previous slide?
Yes.
So the actual location of the cell tower is that round?
It's a circle, correct.
Okay, all right.
The property itself, it actually is kind of leveled through half of it and then there's an upgrade or a hill going back towards Wells Fargo there. We were able to design this so we get a minimal impact to that hill, so it wouldn't be any more retaining or work. And we can try to preserve some of the trees between the tower and the Wells Fargo property. That's why we designed it very long and narrow. And, you know, we're confident that we can get it to fit in there in the relatively small area and try to minimize any unnecessary tree.
But and then each of those equipment pads is a carrier's ground-based equipment?
Exactly, yes. And I actually put a small 10 by 10 foot area in there for your use.
And so those are, those equipment pads are 20 by 10?
Yes.
Chain link fence around them?
No, there's one chain link fence around the entire compound. And then with the gravel base, and then each carrier will come in, put their own cement pad and their own equipment there on.
And ah, do these have backup generators?
That's up to each carrier. They decide whether, they all generally have a battery, battery backup, but they don't always put a generator itself in there. Some do, some don't, some do depending on where the site is and what the needs are. So each carrier has to make that determination for themselves.
And is a 20 by 10 big enough for their equipment and a generator if they wanted it?
Yes.
And are those generators gas-fired?
Generally, they'll want to do diesel because it's easier to cover up. Sometimes there's a diesel restriction to do propane. Propane, if necessary, it would get a little tricky in there because of the spark zone, you need to stay 10 feet away from the fill point, which means there can be no electronic equipment within that radius. So it does kind of tighten things up and make things more difficult.
I also, I don't know, but Metro North would doubtless have an opinion on that too.
With the propane, potentially they may not want propane.
Right, yeah. Okay.
But again, we can, you know, impose restrictions when the carriers would have to, if they wanted a generator, comply with whatever the board decides they wanted in that area.
In circumstances where they do have a generator, they think fires itself up on a test test cycle once a week kind of thing?
Yeah, I believe it's once a month.
I mean, I can tell you that this has been, this was an extended conversation with planning commission about a generator firehouse, for example.
Yeah.
Which is kind of across the street. Yeah.
So they don't fire up or testing out if they add night or anything, usually it sits for a half hour during the day sometime when it's getting drowned out by ugly noises.
And there might not even be a generator.
And there may not be. And if there was a situation where there was a generator on site and it was needed to go through the night because it was being used, obviously then you're in an emergency situation with no power in the area.
Right.
That would be the time you could potentially hear the generator, but you're hearing something that's helping you with that.
Okay.
So this is the first one. Kind of call it your mouth, but it kind of looks like a, like a lighthouse. Again, all of the equipment would, all the antennas rather would be inside. The equipment would still be outside, there's only so much you could fit on the inside of these things. So you would still need the space along the bottom for outdoor equipment, but this is one style.
How tall is it?
Well, we're building an 80 foot tower.
Is the equipment in the image?
No, this is just of the tower itself.
All right.
Yeah. The equipment, next time I come, I can bring some photos, but generally they look like basically refrigerators outside on a concrete pad. And if you're concerned about the visibility of that ground equipment itself, you know, we can, doesn't have to be a chain link fence, we can do a different kind of fence, you can't see through that.
All right, but that's at ground level, so less visible, okay.
So basically the panels that actually project the signal are inside this upper
That's correct.
Upper piece and there are, I guess there are slits or a mesh or something like that, but it's porous?
No, the material itself is what they call RF transparent. And even with RF transparent material, you do get some signal loss. I'm saying, I'm hearing up the two DVs. So you already get some signal loss, but they still call it RF or radio frequency transparent, so the signal can propagate through them. And all the structures I'm going to show you today are designed with that type of technology, where they're all completely hidden behind some type of RF transparent material. And just to back up, to give people a sense too, regardless of what tower type you have, each carrier needs to be above or below one another by 10 feet separation from the center of the antenna line. So in an 80 foot structure, you'd have the first carrier 77 feet, then 66, then 56, then the lowest at 46.
And does that mean that whoever is at the lowest level has the worst signal spreading?
Potentially, yes, from this site, yeah. It is true.
And, and I mean, when, so is the top position on a tower more, a more valuable lease?
No, not necessarily. You know, the first carrier in is also incurring additional costs generally from going through the approval process. So the first carrier in, locating on it, the cost to the carrier is not based on where they are. It's more about the loading they put on the tower themselves, because that is what is actually taking up the structural capacity of the tower. So generally speaking, a 10 foot separation difference, and as you can see at the bottom of these slides here, it shows some RF maps from different heights. 10 feet doesn't really do too much to the signal and if Verizon's the top of one and AT&amp;T is second, maybe on another nearby tower, AT&amp;T is the top and Verizon's second, so everybody's footprint looks a little bit different. So they could still fill the holes at different heights on different towers.
And in this picture, one of the two angle gizmos that look like window frames?
Big windows.
Are they?
You mean the diamonds?
Why are they at an angle? Just, that's a decorative.
I think they're diamonds.
Yeah, I think they're supposed to be diamonds.
I see, okay.
But it doesn't have to look like that either. This is more just to show.
They're decorative, they're not, they're not functional.
You know, or this type of architectural structure. All the ones I'm going to show you, they are pretty customizable.
Okay.
And you can decide, you know, if you want the outside to look like wood or anything. And that's just something for this specific design, just to make it look attractive. It doesn't seem like showing how things work on the inside a little bit.
So the footprint at the bottom is 16 feet square, give or take.
For this design, yes.
Okay.
This is another one. This is a three-legged tower. These are very customizable as well because, you know, the carriers would each be behind each of those panels, even behind the clock panel at the top. And you can have a clock, you don't have to have a clock, you could have them painted any color, you can have them say, welcome to the pleasantville, very customizable. You know, there was talk at one point, one community of having like a contest for these kids and they were going to design each panel with everything look like. You know, you can do whatever you like.
They wish it's, that would be scary.
Is the, the spaces on the, on the photograph there, is that typical of how it would look or is that just a choice that they made?
There doesn't, there's another page that'll show a few different ones.
Okay.
But generally, yeah, they do put space in between them, but then you'll see the one on the right where it's just above the clock, full RF transparent material, there's no space. Obviously, there's an advantage to having the spaces in between as far as the wind loading on the tower.
Right.
And I'm sure that's why it's designed in there.
We can't just do it on a windmill overall?
On a windmill itself?
Functional windmill and have that power it?
Well, you know, there's one actually I took out of here, which was actually looked like the one on the left or the top, there was kind of a windmill to generate power. Generally, you would do that maybe to power the clock or something small, a light on it, but we're not getting any lights on any of these things at 80 feet. A proper windmills, as you've seen, they're huge.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wouldn't fit in this situation and if you do it too small, I don't know if there's any real value from an energy perspective in doing it. But there are some, yes, that do have some type of windmill capacity or functionality to it, you know.
Okay.
These are water tanks. I don't know if necessarily.
Oh, water tanks, right?
Oh, water tanks, right?
Oh, water, yes, right.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so the whole thing, it's actually just a cell tower, there's no water in there at all.
Was the idea that people would rather see a water tank than a cell tower, because it, you know?
Yeah. You know, if you were, maybe not here so much, I think the next one I'm going to show you is what, what I would personally pick. Oh, actually, another one after this. This one's cool too. This, it's more than all this stuff. I wanted something a little artistic to offer as well. And, you know, I've never actually seen one of these around actually build in real life, so something like this that is, you know, novel and artistic. Being in the downtown part of a small village like this, I thought something like that would look good. And there's several different companies that do this.
So, but this one doesn't have any open space, so is that a problem from the?
No, it's just the foundation of the tower itself, it's had to be designed stronger from a certain perspective. Each one would obviously be custom designed, we do geotag to design the foundation. We propose potential loading, max loading over the carriers, we submit that to the engineers and they come up with the design specifications.
Okay.
I like that one. This is, this is from the Italian company, Calzavara, and I'm dying to build one of these somewhere. Yeah, I, I think they really look good. And each panel you see there is, like I said, very highly customizable, you can have just like the reflective. You see on the next page, you can have it lit up in colors, you know, if you're saying Patrick's Day, you can make it green, you know. There are some you can put in there that actually have like electronic billboards and have the change thing. These are more static designs that are shown here as far as, you know, the aesthetic. But, you know, you can still fit a good nine antennas per carrier at the top, which is far more than any flagpole. I think it has a great aesthetic and, you know, if this is something you'd be interested in, I, I would like to at least show this from a visual perspective, rendering to show you what it looked like, because even from my business perspective, and like it to different municipalities, you know, and as the need for these things gets to be more in downtown, you're not on top of mountains anymore. Something like this, I think, is going to become ubiquitous. You know, you see, they're trying to do different things in the city with old payphones. They're turning it into basically small micro cell versions, which are basically just shorter versions of this. And I think if we find something in a modern community where this would fit in, I, I think this is real considering. Plus the most expensive one, so folks probably would be happy about that, but I think, I think that would be something to consider. So the next I do at the end, and it actually showed me this before, but in case the questions came up about coverage, I wanted to re have that information in here. This is basically a, cut and paste some of the analysis that RF engineers did. And you'll see the next few sides show the plots at different heights. This is the site at 100 feet. And then I show, I believe, 70 and then 50, or 75. You see, there's not too much difference. At 50 feet, there starts to become a hole opening up near where the schools are, but they're still covered there and this is a neg 95. Neg 95 is like three to four bars in your funnel. So just because the blue terminates doesn't mean there's no additional coverage past that. You still have additional coverage, but this is just at a neg 95 threshold with the framers they built in for expected tree height, the anticipated coverage. If you just go to the next one, one more, so I just identify the school location there for others that may be watching. Even at 50 feet, you're going to be getting additional coverage, not only for the, obviously the downtown area, 117 and in the highway, but to the residential areas and the school themselves. So that's why I still think the location itself is everywhere.
And the reason the coverage doesn't go further out to, to the upper left is the change in grade?
Yes.
So do you happen to know how tall the tower is on Castleton Street?
I do not, offhand.
So that must be, I would guess, 100 feet. So Chuck, it, why is that tower, is, is it simply that that tower, obviously not yours, is maxed out in terms of the demand on its signal? Because it's high enough to, based on your analysis, cover all these areas, right?
And the castle, that's the flagpole to the cell tower, yes. There's a few reasons why that one might not work, because yes, it is farther away from downtown, this is line of sight technology in proximity, so it does make a difference. Second, it is a flagpole, which means there are less antennas in there. And, you know, they run different antennas based on different frequencies. A low band 700, which goes far, the higher band antennas, which don't go as far, but provide greater speed and capacity. So having a flagpole where each carrier can only stick three antennas, they're probably only going to put their low band antennas in there. Maybe the 700 megahertz, 71. On the record, I was, I don't know exactly what's in there.
Yeah.
But there's less room in those type of designs to allow for a proper tower site that's going to offer the full functionality of the multiple signal frequencies that these carriers operate at. So that combined with, yes, it is a little bit lower terrain and the way the, as you go north through the village, terrain goes up. Even like where we are now, it's a good 15, 20 feet, potentially higher than the cell site itself. So proximity and the limitation on the amount of equipment you can put in there is what is, you know, dictating how much coverage there is to see.
Even in an environment where you have good coverage, it's a flow of data that can get consumed by too many users, right?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
And is that?
The capacity.
So that is part of the issue?
Yes.
Well, when we talked in our very first meeting with Manny, he talked about the coverage plus capacity, you know, combination, he also talked about the Sawmill River Parkway, all, all the use from everyone's, everyone's phone being on after driving past. The, the Castleton Towers, like being used, hanging, hanging with all those drivers all the time.
And that's what's good too, is if we move forward with this project, not only will it obviously help the immediate area here to get coverage, but by offloading capacity from that tower, you're going to make that tower work better for the users that are then going to be paying off that tower because of the process.
And would you, you obviously, you guys invest in this with the expectation that you'll win carriers to be on the tower? Is it near certain that the major players would all want to be on a tower you built at the location you suggest?
Yes, you know, they are on all the ones that are built. And honest, just to back up, we wouldn't actually build this till we at least had one carrier. The purpose of what, they are business model and the way we're moving forward, and I'm going to multiple municipalities doing this. We saw a niche in the market where carriers were just basically coming in with private applications, engineers on board, which I've been a part of. And kind of just throwing it out there and having them say, this is the best spot and this is where it works. What we believe is that if we go to the municipalities and work with you to see where you would find it most suitable. And then we negotiate a lease with you and we design the site, we're taking all that cost off of the carriers. And then I have a lease to go to the carriers and say, hey, you know, Pleasantville may not be high on your priorities because you have some coverage there. Maybe you want to spend the money somewhere else. However, the village has made it easier for you. They already have a site that's approved. They have a site that they're willing to move forward on now, we already have it designed and this is the coverage that you can get from them. Making it enticing to the carriers, especially like I said, in situations where you already have some coverage here, is a win-win for everyone. It's a win to the municipality because at the end of the day, the amount of revenue you're going to get from the tower, although not insignificant, really isn't the driving factor for most municipalities. It's enticing the carriers to get them to spend their own money, which even after I build the tower and everything else, it could probably still cost them up to $100,000 just to locate their equipment on and then pay a recurring rent. So to entice them to do that, we need to make it as easy as possible. And we need to do it in a place that the municipality finds acceptable, instead of the, your carriers constantly going around getting into litigation, trying to get that verdict set up. Make it easier for everybody where the community wants it and this should be easy, because every structure like this is important for everybody, whether they know it or not. So if we can streamline this process and find a place that works for you, I am confident, because like we work with all the carriers and we've known this a long time, I meet with them regularly, that we can get them to locate on this site.
So and in an environment where you have the opportunity, why wouldn't a solution for a much smaller tower on top of a tall building be desirable?
Well, you wouldn't necessarily want to put a tower on top of a building.
But I mean, if you have a, a 60 or 70 foot building.
Yes.
You can be at 80 feet with a 10 foot tower, right?
True. Potentially, if that building is structurally available. As far as I did look around to see what buildings need availability. And yeah, you have, when I hear your tallest building, it's a five-story building about 50 feet. And they could be open to leasing space on that roof. You would be limited to whatever the, however that building itself was built, the limit and structural capacity of what you could fit on top without major upgrades. And the carriers are going to come in to potentially upgrade a building to allow for a tower on top. Now, alternatively, maybe they just, well, they'll live at 50 feet and they'll just put antennas on top of the building. That's a potential as well. The municipality actually loses all control.
I say this with no criticism, that's not the business you're in.
No, but it affects me because if I thought that there was a truly a good viable solution that would be a competitor to this structure, being in my business, I would have to walk away and say, hey, you know, they should just look at their building, it works fine. I don't think it does. Carriers may, you know, if it was easy enough, they could just do it, they haven't done it yet. Your code actually requires that future co-locators go on either existing approved communication structures on land that was previously approved and nothing is built. The third is on village property and the fourth is on existing commercial building. So even a building like that for your code would be fourth on the priority list. But it definitely is a possibility, but if we had this set approved, then by your code, your tower becomes a priority.
So just, just to be clear, an 80 foot tower is give or take 30 feet taller than the tallest building downtown?
Yes, but these buildings are actually 10, 15 feet taller from base elevation, ground elevation than our site.
You mean because they're on lower ground?
Yes.
Right, but as a visual matter, just, I'm not, just so people get an idea.
So 80 feet is what we're talking about? I thought the options were 50, 75 or 100.
I ran the analysis to show you what the coverage would be from those heights. But if we're going to build an 80 foot structure, as they indicated before, you need to have it so that each carrier can go 10 feet lower, 10 feet lower, 10 feet lower. So you couldn't do a 50 foot structure because then the bottom carrier is already down 20 feet or something.
Okay.
So, you know, we think 80 feet is the minimum that would be acceptable here to entice the carriers to locate on it.
Okay. Does Chuck have a tower?
Yep, I actually built one in Noah, in the town of Newcastle, on town of Newcastle property. I built one there, you can't really see it from the comic, but it's back there.
Water plant?
It's back to, in the woods and the side of the water.
Right, where nobody can see it.
Yeah.
Right, if only we had such a spot. Here's another question. As you know, this site drops back steeply down to the tracks. So if what's proposed here is putting a whole lot of concrete pads here, there would be a very significant discussion with Metro North. Do you think that's an obstacle? I mean, clearly it's an issue. Do you think it's an optical?
No, I think it's something we can work with. You know, we've already taken that into account when we're going to plan our foundation design for the tower itself. Generally, the easiest tower design is if you can dig six feet down, you build a 30 by 30 by about three foot deep pad of concrete in the ground, probably bar. Here, I'd probably propose a caisson design instead, which is about an eight foot diameter tube that's drilled into the ground. So you don't have too much hanging off this way and will still have enough soil laterally to hold it in place. So a caisson design, we think, would work here. You know, I'm not concerned about the fear of things falling off and rolling down into the tracks. I'm sure if that was a concern there, we can come up with some kind of.
I mean, once, once it's built, I, I don't think that's much of an issue, but I can tell you that they, for understandable reasons, are very, very focused on any construction work going on where there is the potential for something to come down onto the tracks.
And I respect that.
You know, well, I, I mean, to the extent that there have been moments where, you know, people wanting to do building maintenance, whatever, would be required to have 24/7 Metro North flagmen for an extended period of time. So I just throw that out there as one of the issues that would have to be addressed.
No, no, we're prepared to do that. On other sites in the Palisades, there's our parkway, actually had to have somebody on site at all times to watch and make sure we didn't hurt any rattlesnakes. We're familiar with the.
I don't think we have rattlesnakes in this location.
I hope not. I'd rather deal with this than the rattlesnakes. But, you know, I'm sure that we can come to some agreement with the MTA to do this safely. And obviously, I don't want anybody getting hurt either and I don't want, you know, the trains to be slowed down. My wife uses those trains, so I don't want her to get home.
I just, they, they, I don't say this criticism, there have been moments when the bureaucracy of making something happen near the tracks feels crushing, so.
Oh, it's not going to be fun. You know, the MTA went, they partnered with Parallel Towers and they built a bunch of towers on MTA property, which like entirely telling me it probably didn't go that well.
And it got taken down.
Yes. They skipped around some approval processes.
Yeah.
But no, you know, any bureaucracy like the MTA or the SEC, they are. Um, but no, you know, a- any bureaucracy like the MTA or the SEC, they are difficult to deal with, but it's what we do. And sure, it'll slow things down, but I'm confident that one way or another, we can work it out because you know, if they were going to use this property to build something, they were going to find a way to do it and I'm sure it can be done.
Right, um, the rules may be different for them doing it than for anyone else. So then just to be clear, your view of this and the business opportunity for you would depend on something like this as compared to a monopole?
No, this, the easiest thing for me and the cheapest thing for you would just build a regular monopole, paint it sky blue.
But it would not provide potentially as many carriers or as.
No, it would actually probably potentially hold more carriers and structurally be able to hold more.
But didn't you tell me that the Castleton thing?
Well, that's a flagpole. That's the flagpole, which means all the antennas are within, uh, you know.
Yeah, I think there's some outside of it too, in colors.
Are there some outside too? But even then, if, if they're the tightly mounted ones, you're still limited to the amount of antennas you can put on.
So as you compare the ideal pole of some sort to this, it's a question of whether not a, it's not a functional question, it's a question of whether it's more acceptable to the community to have it look like this as opposed to that.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
Speaking of less visible, uh, locations, I'm just curious, did you look at Nantahagan and the area sort of behind there at all? Seems to me like that's geographically relatively.
You can't put the word Nantahagan in those.
Nantahagan, you know where the village pool is? And the pond?
There's some power lines up there.
Yeah, there's some power lines up there that, it's at a pretty elevated location.
Yeah, that, that, uh, that whole area is owned by New York City DDP.
I thought we had village property back there too.
Mostly DDP and then ComEd.
Yeah.
We have some usements over.
Okay.
And we have water towers that are in a way high location up the hill. Um, whole different set of issues there, but.
Yeah.
Right.
I saw those, those are like technically surrounded by the town of Mount Pleasant.
Yes.
Skinny little access road.
That's exactly right.
Yeah. Um, they're, they're too far east to cover this main area where we're most concerned. Now, you know, I did look at another property that I brought up here last time, um, to the east of the schools. Um, but it's near Wetlands, this Villa Dome.
Right.
Um.
That one is a tough one, it floods and all kinds of problems there.
You know, because you want to have the shortest hour possible here, it's going to be covering a smaller area. So we wanted to pick the spot which is going to be most bang for the buck, which is means being near these dense.
Centrally located, yeah.
So are you guys working with Mount Pleasant in mechanical?
Yes, I am.
And has that gotten traction?
It has, I can't talk about it too much because there's a lot going on there. We already built three towers in the town of Mount Pleasant, I've been working with them for over ten years. I have a supervisor full gen today. Um, the mechanical one is one of the most difficult projects and I've literally been working that one itself like nine years. Um, obviously, I'm working with the Vodka Brothers right now, um. It's a complicated one, but we're almost near the end. I think we found a property, there's going to take some, some things we have to go through there, but, uh, we are near solution.
Okay, and how about Mount Kisco, you're working there too?
Mount Kisco, another person in my office is, I don't have a lot of information on that one, I can get you more, but we are working with them right now as well. And we're about to build on, uh, with the town of Bedford on their property behind their power grid, a boost for the treatment plant. Um, yeah.
Which has gotten contentious.
No, mine hasn't. The Verizon ones, the mental litigation got contention. I originally had an application for prior property.
Yeah.
And like I said before, it's part of the reason why Homeland Towers,
Yeah.
Once the community decided that they didn't want it in that spot because they felt that coming off the highway, it would have been right in front of the exits, they're like, find another spot. So we worked with the town themselves and negotiated the lease with the town of Bedford to use a portion of their property, which was not the ideal location necessarily, it was a little bit further to the west than the carriers would have liked. But we were able to make it work and, you know, we actually just got a building in front of that last month and we're, we're staging construction now. Um, you know, the carriers.
Am I mixing it up? Wasn't there a lawsuit involved?
But that wasn't for mine, that was for another application that Verizon had inside.
I see.
That went to litigation, there was settlements and, um, they're working through the settlement now.
Check.
Another site with under your years property.
The restaurant's closing.
Is it closed? I only went there once with my wife for brunch.
I just read that it was, I think I read.
I saw that too, yeah. But just for the record, I have nothing to do with that litigation on that one.
Okay.
We like to work with the municipality.
All right, other questions?
Well, just, uh, yeah, one, one more question, also just a reminder of some of the reasons why we came here in the first place. Uh, you know, we have, we had an emergency response situation at this high school a few weeks ago that is exactly the sort of situation where we don't want anyone to lack a cell signal in Pleasantville. Um, we, we have, you know, yeah, we, we, we have many, many moments like that where we've come to rely on, uh, come to rely on our three or four bars.
Yeah.
Um, and that, we don't want to sorry, yeah, it was just very stressful morning for those of, with those of us with high school kids and, um, wouldn't, wouldn't want to have any, any fears like that. And so that's the number one, uh, re- emergency response and safety, connecting with children, connecting with people at, at large events where you want extra capacity, whether it's at a football game or, you know, a, a full, a full high school. Um, we also have had stories of people whose, um, healthcare um, providers are now functioning through apps. Right? And so they're monitoring their kid's insulin through an app. And when they're, they're in the part, part of our village where they don't have a cell signal, they can't monitor their kid's insulin and blood sugar. And so there, there are just more and more, um, aspects of our function, functionality as a society that are determined, um, dependent on our coverage. Um, the Chase Bank on Washington moved locations and they don't have a cell signal in the bank. And so all of their user interface through their Chase app for their clients is, they can't use.
Is that in some respects related to the building?
I mean, I mean. It must be, I mean, it must be the type of, but nonetheless, that.
I mean, is that kind of problem resolved by another tower? I mean, some buildings present
Yeah.
an impermeable.
Well, I wouldn't say that impermeable, they do affect the signal. Like, for example, if you were to go on this one here, you know, to get this way, you'd be on the rooftop there shooting through this entire building, do another entire building, do another. And each one, even the leaves on the trees, especially if they're close to the antennas, take a little bit off the signal, take a little bit off the signal. So having it close proximity to the end user really is the future, so I mean, lower towers closer to the end user with less obstruction in between. And having a stronger signal getting to Chase Bank, even though you're going to lose some going through the walls, you're still a better insight. And we were saying before I got here, I was at Lucy's, uh, over a month ago. And inside there, I didn't have service. I had my grand, my father with, uh, my two kids at home. I didn't know if they really needed to reach me or something, they could get through it. And the example that we said were great too, it was actually just last Friday, I was, uh, doing the New York Presbyterian app on the phone. And a lot of the doctors are doing completely opposite things.
I got a ticket, I got a ticket from Pango because I couldn't, they didn't have service.
Hmm.
So, you know, it is important and most, you know, we don't want to beat a dead horse, but even the wireless backups to your alarm system in your home, you know, technically a burglar could come up, just cut your phone. If you don't have a good wireless backup and your alarm system isn't a good thing, whether it's your father or police or anybody, they without that wireless backup, you don't actually have an alarm that you're looking for.
So I know, I know we're, uh, over time here, my, my last question is, um, can you think of any town, you don't have to answer right now, where there's a cell tower so centrally located as this site would be for our town that we could look at or drive out to or look, look at photos of, just to get a sense of the aesthetics of what that might mean, you know?
Yeah.
Because it, it will be, it'll be, um, a challenge with art, with people in Pleasantville, it'll be a challenge to, um, talk them through the aesthetics, even if they agree with the principle that, even if they agree that we need more coverage.
Yeah.
So maybe just for, for next time, if there's anything you can think of.
Yeah, I could think, you know, I'll try to come up with one. But I think if we're really getting to the point where we want to talk into visuals and how you're going to present this to your community, like I said before, I think we should schedule the balloon float, you know, to have me work with your administrator, schedule the float that gives you enough time to, to notify the community so they can see the balloon. Give me a few style types that you like and I'll do accurate visual simulations and Saratoga is one of the best. And they'll be able to really show in a simulation what it would look like. So I really think that would be the next step here, um.
So that makes s- sense, I do wonder whether the photo simulation, which you said they had done, but you were unhappy with, could be polished up to your satisfaction and sent our way, just for starters.
Uh, the reason I'm apprehensive is I had two different companies do it, right? And they both had the tower, one looking a little taller than the other. And I didn't trust either one of them to give an accurate interpretation of exactly how tall this was going to be. So I would be apprehensive to show that to you because I don't want to mislead anybody either by either showing you, oh, it's going to look much worse or taller, or no, no, it's going to look much lower and then come in with something different. We do the balloon float and they use Saratoga and not just the tower manufacturer. That's a product I can rely upon and I would feel more comfortable just providing that to them.
So, um, okay, so let's, we'll talk about that. I, I am wondering at what point we need to engage the question of whether Metro North would have concerns that might make this impossible.
Hmm.
I mean, I think that's at least a possibility, do you think, Eric?
Nothing's impossible.
I mean, a significant foundation has to be built on a hillside over the tracks, right?
We, I, well, yes. I can identify a point of contact at MTA.
Yeah, I'm open to having conversations with any party you want at this point, whether it's a community group or the MTA, we can totally start conversations now. You know, obviously it's in my best interest too.
Yeah, I just, my, my only point about that is I, I wouldn't want to get too far down the road with this site if in fact it will be very hard to achieve, right?
Okay.
Sorry, and the MTA have final say over that property?
The MTA has a very great control over what happens adjacent to their railroad right away here. That is different from saying they have control over the property, but just for example, all these buildings that are against the railroad tracks cannot take action on their own property that has, in the view of Metro North, presents a risk to the tracks.
Yeah.
Fair statement, Eric.
That'd be great.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's the same at Fordham where we have, we have, the Fordham University where I work, has a Metro North border and there's a lot more restriction about what can happen on.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, everything's doable, but if, if it turns out to be fantastically expensive to achieve it, we ought to know that upfront.
Absolutely.
I mean, I assume there's a economic dynamic for you guys and there would be a point at which this isn't going to be the place to do it, right?
Yes.
Or maybe not, so.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, sir, very clear, appreciate that.
Thank you all.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so we're, we are, uh, behind our plan here, but let's let a rip on the communications project. So, um, welcome Chief Ruxner and Lieutenant Wolf.
Thank you, thank you. Apparently tonight is radio and communications transmission apparently here in the village.
Can you provide cell service from this communications up?
I might be, I don't know that I can provide a We the Poop balloon, but.
That seems like the easiest of the things.
So, um, believe you're all, we're in the receipt of the memo from last week.
We are.
The communications project, so we just wanted to give you the opportunity, Lieutenant Wolfman is gonna, he's been really spearheading this project. Uh, we are aware that we came to you some time ago and thought this was going to be an easier project. We did some beta testing, as we've discussed in the past, recognized some, uh, concerns, some of which we have been able to, uh, ameliorate others. We are, uh, as far as equipment and things like that, we're still working on, but we believe that we've made, uh, substantial progress. We're hopeful that this, uh, you know, we should be able to, for lack of a better term, put a shovel on the ground in, in the near future, but we wanted to give you the opportunity not only to hear more details, but also to ask questions. So at this point, I will turn it over to Lieutenant Wolfman for his insights.
Thank you. Uh, I did have a.
I will share it.
That would be great. Um, and I know we're not, we don't have a lot of time, so I will get through as quickly as I can. But as you all know, we're kind of at a crossroads with our communication system. And, uh, you know, we're, can you go right to the, the next slide and talk about the age and why we're at this crossroads, but we were experiencing some issues with our system and, you know, our.
Oh, yeah, it's my screen.
Our system is twenty-five plus years old, it's been here since before I, I was here. Um, there were upgrades that were done, small upgrades, but it is a, an analog system. Um.
For some reason, I can't go full screen, so.
Okay.
You can see.
That's a little wiz into it, so.
Okay.
I don't know what slide that is. Um, yeah, just go back a little bit. And it's a, a VHF system and it's important to know because we're going to talk about real quick the different bands. And I know the gentleman before me was talking about the seven, eight hundred megahertz and it's kind of a good segue for me to come in here. Um, but we're, we're VHF, there's, um, the UHF system and then there's a seven, eight hundred megahertz system. Um, the higher the frequency, the better penetration into buildings and things like that, you see like, um, you know, um, peak skills using it, you know, uh, white planes and knockers have higher frequencies than we currently have. Uh, but jobs are kind of changing and going towards higher frequencies. Uh, we currently have a repeater system, so we have an antenna site on our roof, we have one on the eastern end of the village. So depending on the signal strength, which is stronger, we used to communicate with, uh, to our repeater with old copper, they call them POTS lines, like the old telephone lines. So when we would transmit, if, uh, there, there's equipment that could determine which, uh, signal was greater for, say a car that was in the eastern end of the village, you could know to come off the repeater tower, not the tower on top of the building. So we have that in place currently, our current vendor, which is MetroCom, I said, they, they let us know that we're kind of nearing end of life and they had concerns about replacement parts. They've advised us for a few years now, we really need to think about upgrading your system, changing it out for, uh, for a new, uh, modernized, modernized system. Uh, we do have some dead spots, but that goes with most municipalities and their radio systems. Um, outside the village, we, we have a limited range with our, with our current system, just because we only have two antennas to our whole system, so. Um, we're also, because it's an analog system and not a digital system, we want to have the encryption capability, which means anybody with a scanner that gets our frequency can listen to our channels.
Hmm.
Um, we only can operate currently as our radios can only operate on VHF. So if we have a mutual aid event where we have to go to another jurisdiction that's on UHF or that's seven, eight hundred megahertz, we can't communicate with them on those bands. So we would, you know, there's, there's things we do with mutual aid about having a mutual aid general channel, but it doesn't help in the immediate when you're riding in that jurisdiction, not.
So on the encryption front, is, is the standard to encrypt at least twenty stations?
That is the.
So guys in their basement who just like to listen?
So anybody who's moving ahead is typically moving to digital so they can.
Okay.
Uh, what are our options here? So options are replace our current system with a new analog system, which means we basically have exactly what we have now, but it's newer and we don't have to risk parts going bad and things like that. Uh, the pitfalls to that is it doesn't address our current dead spots, we still can't encrypt. We still have our static in our different areas, we're still only on that VHF. And I say here, we don't have the LTE option because I'm about to talk about, uh, you know, one of the third options that does have an LTE capability. Um, the other thing is we are still then required for our infrastructure, which is our antennas, our, our, uh, equipment that supports those antennas. Um, also going forward, no matter what direction, we currently don't have recurring costs with our radio system. So we're not paying for, uh, phone lines, that's coming to an end. Our vendors advise us that any new system, even if it's analog, is going to need a, uh, a uh, fiber optic line that's going to communicate, so that carries a monthly charge. Um, so we're required to do that. So the next is what's our section, our second option is the, uh, replace our existing system with a digital repeater system, which then we would have the ability to encrypt, um, which would minimize our static interference. Again, that would still only operate on VHF, does not have an LTE option. Um, and we are still responsible maintaining our antenna sites, which would be a minimum, one on the building and one on the eastern end of the village. That's not to say we wouldn't require a third to have, you know, improve to really improve those, uh, those areas where we kind of have dead spots. Option three is join the MTA communication system, which we've talked about a little bit with all of you. Um, it is a shared service, we no longer be required to purchase and maintain the, uh, antenna sites. So we did a lot of testing, aided testings, Chief said, with, um, with their radios. Now, keep in mind, they have a tower in Valhalla and they have a tower in Mount Kisco. And we had good service, we didn't have great service, we had good, good service. That said, you know, I say down here and well, probably the next page, but the MTA is committed to putting a site right here in the village on the eastern side.
Be, because they need that for their own purposes.
Correct.
But would benefit us.
It will benefit us greatly and it will strengthen their system and help with, uh, you know, to improve the signal for their offices as well. Um, that has an LTA, that LTE capability, so it can work up a cellular where even if we, uh, the way it's been explained to me is that they carry a cord, that the cellular cord down in New York City. And it's very expensive, but they, they're fronting that, they're, they're paying for that. We just would have to pay the monthly LTE charge, which we get a discounted rate through AT&amp;T first now. And I think Chief talked about it last time about what LP. And I think Chief talked about it last time about what AT&amp;T first net, uh, won a government bid, uh, post nine eleven, they came out and were concerned about. Um, issues, uh, just what just like Mr. Gufford uh talked about with um. The cell strength kind of like too many people on uh trying to make phone calls all at the same time. Uh, they can't get through where with the first net option, it prioritizes first responders so that we would make sure that, you know, they make sure we can have a. Those before everything else does. Um, it is also digital, so everything would be encrypted. The uh probably one of the greatest benefits on top of it is their multi-band radios, so they can talk on VHF, UHF and the seven, eight hundred megahertz. Um, we were with the data testing with seven, eight hundred megahertz in the buildings, we did it in the schools. Like I said, it was good, it wasn't great. And I have this, you know, adding an antenna right here in the uh in the village, I we anticipate. Um, very includes coverage. Um.
But you would choose to be UHF, VHF or?
So we would operate the, the MTA system operates on seven, eight hundred megahertz, which is the highest frequency. But those bands have that, those radios have the capability of communicating with other agencies that are on UHF and VHF.
So if you were on this system, you'd be the seven, eight hundred.
Correct.
Operators and that has the best signal penetration.
Correct. So the higher the frequency, the greater the penetration, less uh. Uh, distance, but they have a lot of antennas in their, you know, in their sites in their in their system and also again, the redundancy of the LTE, which uh, you know, makes a big difference.
The MTA system is is for MTA police, it's not for MTA operations?
Uh, I I can't speak to that if they're using it also, but I I think they are. I believe they are because they've offered it even as an option for like. If our DPW ever wanted to go to it, they they offer that option, so. Um, and there's a growing number of agencies in Westchester County that are opting to go to the MTA shared services option. Um, and I think the greatest benefit to us is that we are no longer required to pay for. We're worried about our own antenna sites and repeater systems. It's really just the radios. There is enough on cost to them. They're they're really good radios, but. Um, once we purchase those radios, um, there are some recurring costs because um we will have. Radio consoles that have to have a fiber optic line that goes down to New York City, down in Manhattan. Um, so.
So is there such a fiber optic line and we simply have to pay to have access to it or?
Yeah, so it would be a light path, a fiber line, so.
Do we have light path to this building already? Is it just paying to use it?
Correct.
It's not some big infrastructure upgrade?
No, no, my understanding is just really uh the monthly.
So. What's what's in it for the MTA?
So, uh, really? There there isn't much. They're they're kind of giving back. It's been explained to us that this is their give back to local municipalities who have always been there. To support their officers when they need help because they're traveling through all our jurisdictions and there's been a lot of times where whether we're holding down a call. Until they get here or if their officers need help, we've been able to respond. And I think now that their major infrastructure is in place, it's a. It's.
Can they get some additional antennas?
Right, right. Yeah, so the antenna sec, they're creating, they're creating that network, that radio network on their own, so there isn't, there isn't a huge outlay for them already. We're sort of piggybacking onto what they're already building for their own officers. Um, it is an incredibly robust network that first net is, um, again federally mandated, so that infrastructure is all in place. They're really. Just allowing us to purchase the equipment and then use their their airspace.
Um, they're going to be, uh. Their antenna sites, cellular core, security programming and updates are going to be handled by the MTA at no cost to us.
Uh huh.
Um, and again, they committed to an antenna site here in the village and uh just talking about mutual aid in the future of communications in uh in the county. Uh, this is, these radios have tremendous capability, so it's uh, no matter what changes are made. Going forward, even if county makes any changes, I'm confident that these radios have the capability to communicate with those systems.
Is county going to the seven, eight hundred format?
Um, they're, so I'm trying to think what their new system has, I. I believe it is still going to be VHF for them. I don't know if they went to seven.
Hey, is Mount Pleasant talking about this?
Uh, Mount Pleasant did, from my understanding, I don't want to speak to, but I think they did a lot of testing and they were having uh more. A lot more dead spots than than we had. I think the photography was definitely a challenge with uh with it and I think they would need, you know. Uh, they would have to front their own sites, you know, I don't.
I mean, I assume people are kicking the tires at this all the way up the, well, the three railroad lines, right?
Correct, yeah.
Newcastle talking about it?
Uh, I haven't spoken to anyone in Newcastle.
Okay, so so it's give or take three hundred thousand bucks to buy all this stuff?
Correct.
And then twenty one, twenty two thousand dollars a year to maintain it?
Correct.
Uh, although we're spending money every year to maintain what we have.
Yes.
How much would spend for the existing system?
So. Well, currently, we we've been at a state where, you know, it it's very unusual, but we have no recurring phone line costs or a fiber cost or anything like that. But like I said, our vendors advise that moving forward, no matter what system replacement, an analog, a digital, or you're going to have recurring costs that are going to come with that.
And just not, not that I'm leaning in this direction, but if we bought another analog system, what's the equipment cost for that?
It's still six figures. Uh, it's probably, I think, the analog replacement is somewhere in the one thirty range.
So it's that that quote's about a year old. Once we kind of made the decision on MTA that that was the decision we're going, so we haven't updated those.
By round figures, it's half the price, but at the price of loss of all this utility.
Correct. Loss of that and you're on the hop forward the equipment.
Uh huh. And then, and then once we have this three hundred thousand dollars worth of stuff, how long do these radios last?
Yeah.
So, you know, that's a good question. My hope is to get ten, ten years, you know, at least out of these radios, but uh, you know, with technology changing, I I really.
The good is that they are able to be upgraded, um, you know, is like most things, you know, that we have now. The the hardware itself is one part, it's really the software that's running inside of it that that uh creates all the functionality of it. So, uh, included in some of these costs and and one of the reasons we need the LTE coverage is so that. As MTA continues to do upgrades on their self, their software internally, uh, we can receive those. We don't have to bring them in, take the radios out of service and have them uh brought in to be updated. Uh. So, you know, we would expect, I mean, we have some some portable radios downstairs that are, you know, definitely easily ten years old that are. Um, that are still in in use or still able to be used, so we're not. We're not, we're not concerned necessarily of the like.
Did you say? That if you did this, you would keep the old system running in parallel?
So it's not required, it's not necessary, but uh vendors I've spoken to this, listen, if it's. Functioning, you're going to leave it there until it breaks and have that channel available. You can, but I know we have some upgrades coming to village equipment down the road where. That antenna may come down, but it's just, they're more or less that needed, well, needs to come down, but there's, we're not, wouldn't be maintaining.
So would the MTA scheme scheme, would the antenna on the roof of this building still be a part of the system?
No longer.
So it would be required for the old system running in parallel?
Yeah.
But at the point at which that was gone, we'd take that antenna down, it wouldn't need.
Yeah.
And then. What would that mean in the cars? Two radios in the cars? Two radios on an officer's belt?
Um, no, so the uh, the new radios could just switch to that channel and still talk on our on our channel, so.
What about in the cars?
Same thing. That's going to be, we're going to.
So be all new radios in the cars?
Correct.
And is that included in the three hundred thousand ish?
So, yeah, I mean, we we looked at it and we were looking at costs and we're trying to be as cognizant of, you know, and mindful of that. And we were, we were looking at putting these um multi-band radios in the frontline market, police car, uh patrol cars. And we're thinking for detectives, administrative cars, we'll just rely on our portables and keep our. Um, our older radios in the car because they can still scan and communicate with VHF. Uh, you know, jurisdictions that are on the VHF.
It all all makes sense, but down the road, when that system starts to fail, you're going to come back and say we got to pay to get those cars upgraded to.
So, uh, we could continue just to buy another VHF mobile radio if that radio fails.
I mean, I guess at some point that. The headquarters equipment is going to fail, right? For the old system.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so. The the fact is, is that even a portable, even some jurisdictions are actually um not putting. Mobile units in the cars. They are exceptionally more powerful and especially we don't think that that's a a reasonable uh option or decision for us, but. There are jurisdictions that work purely on portable radios, so were we to lose, we don't necessarily immediately have to install, especially in detective cars and the administrative cars. Mobile radius, mobiles are the ones that go to call portables are the ones that care. Um, because we can work off.
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good, so. And that all makes sense of, I'm just trying to predict in future years, are you going to come and say, you know, we were trying to save money day one, but now we need to do this?
We we believe we have a path forward where once that, once any part of that analog system fails, that system is now obsolete and we don't, we don't intend to.
And then tho- those other cars would just use the mo- the portals?
Correct.
Not the mobiles. Okay, so when is the MTA building this antenna on the eastern edge of the village?
So I've been told this summer, they would, they they're gonna, they were looking to start the project, so. That's all I've gotten so far, so I'm being, I'm hopeful that by the end of the year, we have the antenna.
Okay, so is that three hundred thousand number literally a bid or is that a ballpark?
That is a very specific, that is the most recent pricing and a very specific. Work through of the equipment that we know we're.
And is this like a state contract or a sole source of some kind?
State contract.
Okay. Police departments are expensive, I've noticed.
They are.
And I can't just put another tower up next to it.
I know.
Yeah.
And MTA just built ourselves out of ours.
All right, I thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, Jesse. Thank you. All right, so we have a few other things to discuss, but we are behind schedule, so we're gonna. Give it to our regular meeting.
Excuse me.
Thank you, Jesse. Thank you.
So we've got a presentation by the police chief, but I'm gonna push resolution one thirty six up front and then you you want to speak? Absolutely, yeah, so when we start the meeting, we're going to push that resolution up front, so you don't have to sit here and you're welcome to, needless to say, but. Trying to spare you. Uh, an extended visit. It's one thirty six.
Thirty seven. Will I be ready now?
Yes, you will. You will. You want to, uh, when we do announcements, we'll do after this, so these guys don't have to wait. You want to talk about that leapfrog event?
Sure.
Oh, well, no, she she.
I agree.
Yeah.
This is a whole.
That was impressive.
Yeah.
You think about something and Alyssa already has done it.
Hasn't quite.
Right. Everybody ready? All right, good evening. Uh, welcome to the village board meeting uh for the village of Pleasantville. Uh, today is Monday, April twenty four. As is the case for all of our meetings, uh, we are meeting here at eighty Wheeler Avenue, but also having a. Parallel opportunity for people to log on via Zoom if they are so inclined. You can pick up the Zoom links for our board meeting as well as for other boards and commissions at the village at Pleasantville-ny.gov. Um, we began the evening and work session and have now moved into our regular session. Our next regular meeting is the second Monday in May, which is Monday, May eighth. So we have a number of things going on tonight, including a presentation by the police chief and some announcements to make, but um we have some folks here from four forty four Bedford Groden. Uh, rather than keep them any longer than was necessary, uh, I'm I'm going to suggest that we take the first resolution, number one thirty six, out of order to do that up front. Um, before we read that into the record, uh, their attorney uh requested the opportunity to speak and be commuted.
Hi, good evening everyone. Uh, thanks for the opportunity. Nice to see you again, Jeff Kessbaro. I represent the owners of uh four 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 Bedford way across the street. Um, we we've seen the proposed resolution. Um, I think it was posted. Um. It was posted to your website, I believe, sometime last week.
Right.
Um, I did, and read through it, I noticed that there's some very specific findings, um, and I know you haven't voted yet. Uh, about, um. If if you adopt this, very specific findings about what we showed and whether it was directly caused um by the moratorium itself. And the the only thing that concerned me uh in reading this was that I don't remember public deliberations by this board to come to these findings. And so my only concern is whether, um, these findings were, um. Negotiator discussed outside of uh the the normal purview of an open meeting. Um, but but that being said, uh, we do have the proposed findings and. One, one of the uh, the findings that's proposed in this resolution is that. While the property is suffering a significant financial hardship, it's not directly caused by the moratorium. And so if I could just address that.
Sure.
Just because, um. Uh, you know, the fire is burning and there's an opportunity to put it out. And maybe the opportunity is a lifeline or, so use the analogy of a of a fire, a chance to 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 put the fire out. And the moratorium has passed and puts an obstacle in the way. I would submit that the moratorium is directly. An obstacle and directly exacerbating our financial hardship. And to the extent that you haven't voted yet, I would just submit to you, it's a, it it has an opportunity to be a beautiful building. For one of the, the most important intersections in the village. It's directly across from Village Hall. This this building, which is also a beautiful building, was a bank and it was given a new life. And, uh. That building across the street, if you imagine uh the limestone being cleaned. Um. A proper uplighting to really show its magnificence. Um, and and uh, and new housing, that's a new place for people to live and come and enjoy Pleasantville and become a part of Pleasantville community. I I would submit to you that it's a, it's a wonderful opportunity for this village. And uh, the owners of the property, they've been here, they're. They are involved in the building, their family has been involved in it for forty years. They want to invest in this village. And it's now known that they want to uh invest in the property, they want to redevelop it. And with that being known to the public, it's very difficult for them even to pivot right now and find a new commercial tenant. Because who's going to come in? Uh, well, even if they could find one, I I don't know that there's an anchor tenant, a a bank available. No banks are interested. It's a different model for for retail banking right now. Um, but even if they were to try and find a tenant to take some of the upper office space to sort of mitigate their damages or or their losses. Who's going to come in and try and start a business where you know long term the owner has already charted a course? To to redevelop the 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 property. And they made their intentions known, they held it informal, um, they they discussed it with the planning board. Um, they really tried to come up with a project that would be the best fit for everyone. Um, and I and I know that that there have been comments from the public that more multifamily housing is not popular. But I would submit to you, one of the, one of the the jobs you have in applying the law you you enacted that has this carve out for hardship. One of the jobs you have is to sometimes make a choice that's not the most popular. One of the jobs you have is to sometimes make a choice that's not the most popular opinion because it's right and the applicant has established that we meet the standard under your law. So those are the comments I wanted to, to make tonight. If you have any questions, I understand it, but busy evening, I'm happy to answer.
So let me just respond to, to a cou- a couple of those things, the, the first is to say, as we try to make clear to the public in the course of this, and as you well know, we're not sitting here uh, uh, to suggest that we are in favor or opposed to the project. And I think, I speak for myself, but likely for all of my colleagues, that, that, uh, the, the vibrant reuse of that property is a goal we all have and likely a goal for most people in Pleasantville. So this isn't a, a vote about that. It's purely the narrow question of, we have a moratorium, that a moratorium arose for reasons that I think everybody's clear on. We are where we are at this point, uh, you've represented clearly what the monthly loss is, which is nobody wants to lose money, but it's not an outrageous money. And we're now three month, eh, months-ish from the end of this moratorium. Um, and, uh, most of the financial problems that exist pre-existed the moratorium, right? Your argument, which you just made understandably, is it's just extending that pain s- some more months, right?
Yes.
So, um.
Well, we don't know how, as we talk about extending the moratorium beyond.
And, and I can't guarantee that that won't happen, it certainly is not our goal. Um, and, uh, uh, obviously the resolution of all of that is going to involve the community and, and, and further discussion, but um, we're well aware of the moments when we need to make unpopular decisions, and I don't think this is about being popular or unpopular. And honestly, I think I can speak for myself, most of the people who've talked me about this, the issue of whether the waiver should be um, accepted or denied, have done so in the context of saying, well, I don't want this project. Well, that isn't what we're talking about here, we're talking about uh, the question of whether you've met the guidelines for this waiver, so I say to you, and I certainly say to the community, anybody who's watching, that's not what we're voting on and, and no one should take it to suggest that any one of the five of us has opined in favor or against the project. We are where we are with our community in understanding the evolution of our community. Um, and we've responded what they have asked us for. It pains me anytime anyone is, is, uh, he, he harmed by anything we do. But inevitably, people's interests collide and that's where we are. But I, I will say, it's our, it's our goal, uh, that I hope we achieve that the moratorium ends at the end of its six-month run, um, and I'd point out also, obviously you have the opportunity, uh, it's a, it's a, uh, an investment risk to continue your work with the planning commission. Um, so that, at that point at which a moratorium is lifted, you might, uh, have rounded another base on the, on the diamond, but that's under, uh, up to you entirely, and I, I certainly fully understand why you would say, hey, why, why would we take the risk of going through a further review when we might have to rethink the project in some way?
And not just rethink it, but redesign it, and those design costs are expensive.
I get it, I totally get it, yeah, so, I totally get it.
Yeah, and my rationale is pretty similar to what Peter described, um, I, it's m- my decision on this particular issue has nothing to do with my feelings about the project, um. I think that there are a lot of positive aspects about the project, um, and I agree, it would be great to see that property vitalized, it's very central to the village. I'm also very sympathetic to the situation that the owners are in, um. Uh, but at the end of the day, I think my decision hinges on the causal relation to moratorium and the hardship, which, um, I don't see, even though I, I agree that it aggravates it and it prolongs the pain, um. Uh, but I sort of concluded that there wasn't a direct causal relationship and to me was the, the threshold, um, that the hardship exemption had to be able to cross, um. And yeah, and I would just second what Peter said, which is that we are, we are hoping that the moratorium will end um, after the six-month mark, but you know, that we can't say definitively because, um, you know, we, we are still in the process, but that's our, certainly our goal.
Um, I, I do want to be clear, we have not had any deliberations about this, so, um, when it was posted, I saw it when you saw.
Yeah, we haven't said how we're.
And I, I say that because we are, we are also responding to advice of council, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, so, so I, I do want to say something about this, which is that, uh, what has happened here disturbs me because I believe that we speak incorrectly when we say us to do something, uh, an interest group within our village, um, which is a large number of people for us, uh. We don't, we rarely hear from two hundred people about anything in this village, but there's more than seven thousand people who live here. Um, and so it's a very small minority, but a very loud voice relative to what we hear on other issues. Um, and then fortunately, I don't think that the various things that those people were responding to was an amalgamation of issues, um, that had to do with shifting lifestyles, uh, people driving their kids to school more often than they did before the pandemic. Um, uh, general increase in use of cars, a lot of the things that have nothing to do with the A one district that have nothing to do with, uh, multi-use development. Uh, and, uh, unfortunately, I think the, the reality is that when we only hear from one interest group, we have to respond to them, because we don't know what the rest of the village thinks, and there probably is no way to know. Um, a survey would only get, again, the people who feel the most strongly about the issue responding to it. Um, uh, so I, I think, you know, the, the, the advice of council and everything else is probably determinative of your specific issue, but I want to apologize too, because I think you're in a way, in an unfortunate situation where our, it's very likely, I believe, that our, um, master plan was correct, uh, and that it sought the right kinds of development for the village, that it's only had success on the village so far and, and, and large part. Uh, you can stand in front of forty-four Washington Avenue and see about one person every hour come into or out of that building, um. Uh, I lived next to the brothers, you know, and again, I've never been there, and those people who depend entirely upon cars to move into and out of the village, unlike, you know, people who are in walking distance of the train station. Um, and, you know, while I'm sure we'll see some, uh, evolving of the, uh, the, the report of the experts on, you know, the potential effects of the build out. The first draft certainly suggested that there wasn't going to be a significant impact, and I, I think, you know, it's highly unlikely that, that even if they are looking at a very scenario, they're going to find an issue for emergency services or anything like that. So, so I feel bad, and I hope that you don't get up on us because I, I think this village will continue to try to do the right things in the long term to, to build a solid economic base, to, uh, welcome people of different races and income levels and try to create ways for our children and our parents to live here when they're not in their prime income years, um, and, uh, and you could be part of that.
Thank you. All right, thank you, sir. So let's deal with this and in, in order to avoid having these guys have to hang out. Uh, call resolution one thirty six.
Whereas on January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, the Board of Trustees adopted law one, two thousand twenty-three to enact a temporary moratorium on land use applications for site plan approval, specially used permit approval, subdivision approval, variance relief and building permits pertaining to properties located in the central business A one district, including the central business A one sub-area, subject to certain limitations, the moratorium, and whereas the purpose of the moratorium is to preserve the status quo while the Board of Trustees assesses whether zoning code amendments are necessary to ensure the scope of development permitted in the central business A one district is appropriate and can be supported by the village's infrastructure. And whereas the term of the moratorium is six months following the date, the local law was filed with the Secretary of State, the local law was filed with Secretary of State on January thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. It's scheduled to expire on July, on July thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, unless extended by the Board of Trustees. And whereas the moratorium allows property owners to file an application with the Board of Trustees requesting an exemption from the pre, from the provisions of the moratorium. And whereas four 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 associates LLC, the applicant is the owner of property located at four 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 Bedford Road and one oh nine Nash, one eleven Wheeler Avenue within central business A one district, here in after collectively referred to as the property. And whereas on November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, the applicant submitted an application for site plan, three subdivision and architectural approval for post-mixed use development consisting of thirty-six apartment units and approximately two thousand one hundred forty-five square feet of commercial space, the development application. And whereas the applicant appeared at the planning commission meeting on January eleventh, twenty twenty-three, prior to the moratorium being enacted and gave a presentation regarding the development application, and whereas prior to that date, the applicant informally presented preliminary design drawings for proposed development to the planning commission as it's September twenty-eight, two thousand, added September twenty-eight to to a meeting, and whereas on March eighth, two thousand twenty-three, the applicant submitted a written application to the Board of Trustees provisions of and where on March seventh, two thousand twenty-three, the applicant made an initial presentation to the village board regarding the application requesting a hardship exemption, and whereas a public hearing was held with respect to the application for hardship exemption on April tenth, two thousand twenty-three, at which time the applicant made a presentation in support of the application and all members of the public were given an opportunity to comment with respect to the application. And whereas pursuant to the terms of the moratorium, it is the application's, it is the applicant's burden to demonstrate that the moratorium will cause it to suffer severe financial or economic hardship that is directly caused as a result of the moratorium. And whereas the applicant has asserted that the property is experiencing economic hardship because at the current level of occupancy, it is experiencing negative cash flow. That the age of the building and the property and the economic market are causing significant problems. And given the current market conditions, a pending application is the only viable use of the property, and whereas the applicant further asserts that each day the moratorium is in effect, exaggerates the hardship. And whereas the village board has carefully considered the evidence and submission presented by the applicant and by members of the public. And whereas the proposed review of the application is of type two action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRE, and no further environmental review is required. Now, therefore, be resolved that the village board finds as follows. The financial evidence and data submitted by the applicant indicate that the property is suffering significant financial hardship. However, it is the determination of the village board that the financial hardship is a result of the market conditions that have existed for a number of years due to the loss of the applicant's anchor tenant of the property, Chase Bank, and the current general economic and commercial real estate market conditions. The applicant's evidence and data demonstrate that the financial hardship did not begin with arise out of, or relate to the adoption of the moratorium in any manner. The application, the applicant has not submitted evidence demonstrating or otherwise explaining how the financial hardship the applicant is currently suffering on the property was caused by or is otherwise a direct result of the adoption of the moratorium. While the moratorium does prevent the planning commission from issuing a determination on the development application, the moratorium does not put who the applicant from proceeding with the review of the development application before the planning commission, so, before the planning commission, so that when the moratorium expires or it is terminated, the applicant can immediately seek a determination from the planning commission, provided all information necessary for such determination has been fully submitted and vetted. Now, therefore, be it further resolved that based on the foregoing findings, the applicant's application seeking an exemption for the moratorium, moratorium is hereby denied.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, comments anyone wish to make? All right, uh, let's take a, a roll call vote on this, Paul.
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen, the context, I, I hope we've been able to give you the context that this isn't about your project, this is about this narrow question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, uh, with that, let's go back to our regular sequence of events. Um, Chief Eric Rutzner is here for his quarterly update. Welcome, sir.
Hello, good evening.
Want me to share a screen?
Yes, please, if you don't mind. Mr. Alvarez has rested the night off, I'm reading. Not like I read for work on today.
All right, welcome Chief Rutzner.
Thank you so much, so as, uh, back in quarterly updates, um, this will cover the first quarter of twenty twenty-three. Um, let me jump right into it. Again, our call for service, we do this every, every quarter, just to give an idea to the public of the calls that were going on, um. You know, winter tends to be a little bit lighter sometimes in our call volume, you know, nothing, nothing truly outstanding there on that first page.
These all versus the last quarter or the last year at the same time?
I'm sorry, that's versus the last quarter, previous quarter, if, if, and again, this is meant to be, I, I have a feeling we're gonna get to a couple of topics that might become more interactive than, uh, than others, but if there's a, a desire to see a more robust reporting or a different style of reporting, please let me know.
Okay.
Um, some patrol activity comparison, this now goes back, uh, five quarters, which we do so that we do get the last the, uh, the previous year's, uh, first quarter also, um, but you see a slight decrease in some of the, uh, call activity that we have on, on the room.
So blue is traffic summons.
Mm-hmm.
Orange is parking tickets.
Uh, uh, red is parking tickets, orange is, uh, blotters.
Right. Blotters being any incident?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. And patrol arrests are listed there as well.
Okay.
Next, if you're ready. All right, so, uh, as usual, we, uh, we strong focus on community policing, uh, we continue to interact with schools, uh, directly having our officers there as much as possible. Uh, Detective Charlie, Detective Smith regularly in the schools, uh, not just for, uh, legal reasons, but also to, uh, teach students. Detective Charlie has begun teaching in the high school, he's for a long time been teaching in the middle school, teaching the eighth grade health class. Um, now he has found, uh, an opportunity to teach in the high school as well, so we're encouraged by that. Uh, and you may have seen that in the middle of the day tour, we have officers back at the walking post here in the downtown. Um, sort of suspended a little bit during the, the colder winter months, but as the weather, as we move into the spring, like we have returned the walk, walked back to Wheeler Avenue.
What stock, what is Detective Charlotte teaching in the high school?
So he's. Um, I, I, apologies, I don't know the exact class that he's in, but it is interactive, it is meant to be, you know, I don't want to say life life skills or things like that, but, you know, he's.
I always go into health class sometimes.
Yeah.
Doing drug and alcohol education and things like that.
Yep, absolutely, but you know, now with the high school students, he has, you know, you know, we've got kids who are potentially driving, we have uh, kids who are potentially moving out in the next year or so, uh, onto, uh, college or other opportunities. And so just the opportunity for them to interact with him and, uh, and have the opportunity, so he works very closely with the staff to make sure that his lesson plans are, um, appropriate and, um, uh, centered on what, what the kids were, are talking about and, and what they're working on.
An activity he may not have anticipated when he himself went to that high school.
Exactly, exactly. Uh, next, please, uh, both lieutenants Gilmar and Wallman, uh, participated, the school has done a number of, uh, safety task forces over the years. Uh, excuse me, over this school year, it was one of the goals of the, of the Board of Education, the superintendent of the schools to focus on safety. Um, Dr. Vassar convened a task force for reunification, one of the very narrow but extremely important functions that goes into, uh, a critical incident, maybe the reunification of students with their parents. Uh, and so she wisely incorporated the community into the reunification, uh, process. Got input from everybody, uh, there's obviously a template, there's a model, but then that template has to be adjusted and personalized for every community. Um, so really was a great opportunity for us to be in the school, a great opportunity for, uh, Lieutenant Gilmar and Lieutenant Wallman to, um, connect with the staff and the other emergency. to, um, connect with the staff and the other emergency service providers who are in those meetings. Uh, next, uh, so I, uh, I have been appointed as a member of the Pat, Westchester PACS Steering Committee. Uh, as most of you know, it's easy to get appointed to something when you raise your hand and volunteer for it, which is exactly what happened.
Or you gotta show up to the meeting.
Yes, exactly. Before you know it, you're volunteer. Uh, so PACS stands for Police Alive in Communities and Schools, it is part of Westchester County's, uh, police reform process. Uh, they convened this committee to really build partnerships with communities and schools. It is, uh, information sharing, it is relationship building, there's benchmarking, setting of best practices. Uh, and so we have, uh, representatives from BOCs, other police law enforcement, uh, officials, school, district employees, really working together. Um, we'll do a couple of safety symposiums throughout the year, we have monthly meetings in which, uh, both law enforcement and school officials are invited to attend. We bring in outside, um, um, partners from the private sector as well, who provide services that might be appropriate for schools and for emergency response planning. Uh, mental health, county mental health, um, personnel are involved in the, in the program. So it's a really wide range, and the idea is to cast as wide a head as possible and really make sure that not only are the schools safe, but also the relationships are built so that we're anticipating, uh, whatever, whatever the other issues might be. Uh, next, please. All right, uh, we had the, the wonderful opportunity for tutor time to come stop by, here's a photo of Detective Charlie and Officer Sayeta welcoming tutor time, uh, gives you, in the downtown area, a lot of times you'll see them out and about, so they, they managed to stop in one time, so we got to show them sort of what we do behind the scenes.
Get them on the civil service list, get them on early.
Absolutely. Uh, all right, so some calls of note, uh, March twenty-fifth, we had, um, it's interesting, I'm not gonna read this entire thing, but basically we had a, a person who's known to us here in the village who we deal with on a regular basis, who was, uh, stealing scratch-off lottery tickets. We were able to, uh, prove through an investigation in cooperation with the victim that what we first thought was maybe just two or three tickets that had been stolen turned out to be about sixteen hundred dollars worth of scratch-off lottery tickets that he had stolen over time. Um, so he was arrested, charged, and received, uh, not only an appearance ticket returned to court, but also, uh, an order of protection prohibiting him from returning to the store. So again, great partnership, not only with, um, the victim, but also with the court and everybody involved in, uh, in bringing this to justice, and also obviously our detectives did a great job with patrol, um, finding out what we needed to do to, to move that to the next step. All right, as I said, I was expecting this to be interactive, so as we all know, March thirtieth, um, I got a phone call at eight o'clock in the morning as I was getting into my car that, uh, high school, we had received a, uh, telephone call reporting an active shooter event in Pleasantville High School. Obviously, uh, everybody, for me, for the officers here, and obviously for the entire community, um, you know, for a short time, uh, the, the real possibility existed that we were experiencing what every community dreads. Um, but the, the good news, obviously the first good news is the fact that it was not a, an actual threat, it was not an actual big false report. Um, but we, as always, operated as if, um, until we knew something, we didn't know it. So we had some original suspicion when the call first came in, we were aware that there are state and federal uh, history of people doing what's called swatting, uh, which is basically calling and, and attempting to get a police response to a location. Um, so we did know that that was a possibility, um, but until we had confirmed that, we responded as if this was an actual, uh, emergency. Uh, if you go to the next slide, please. So we did a couple of things, uh, we requested mutual aid from both Mount Pleasant Police Department and the Westchester County Police Department, they responded with, um, significant resources that were critical. And, uh, not only addressing the threat or the possibility of the threat, the investigation inside the school, but also establishing a perimeter, um, bringing in other resources to bear, potentially, uh, bomb-stemming dogs, other things such as that. Uh, obviously, so we got the call, we called the school and responded, so, uh, it was on our information that the school was put into lockdown. Uh, this was during, uh, arrival, as everybody knows, so that presented, uh, a challenge. Uh, I'm not gonna go into too much of the specifics of the decisions that were made, uh, at the school level or anything like that, I think that's, you know, they, there is, there's obviously ongoing and continuing, um, work from the school to continue to communicate not only the decisions that were made, but also the lessons that were learned from this. Uh, but suffice it to say, the school immediately went into lockdown. We checked the building, uh, checked not only the location that the, uh, the incident was reported to be at, but also the entirety of the building while the students were still in lockdown. Once we, once we had, um, once we were confident that the threat as it was reported was not true, uh, then we started to go through, um, went through, basically had, had moved from a lockdown to a hold-in place where the students were informed, you know, you are safe, you are, you know, there is, at, at this time, there is no threat, there's no activity going on. Uh, but we're gonna ask everyone to stay in place, and we made sure we had the entire building checked. Uh, then we withdrew and allowed the students to be, to resume their normal day. Um, I can say that I was with, uh, both the superintendent, the business officials, the principals throughout the entire morning that day, it was Lieutenant Gilmar and Lieutenant Wallman, a number of our officers. Uh, the communication and the collaboration that went on was, uh, exemplary. Uh, the procedures that were in place worked. Uh, in general, obviously, you know, you can, you can do as many lockdown drills as you want, but there is no way to replicate uh, an actual event. Uh, this is as close as we're going to get to, um, to address rehearsal for, for there to be an actual serious incident at schools. Uh, and again, it is our, while we are continually to look at what we did right, we're also recognizing that, um, there were some lessons to be learned, and we are learning those lessons, we're incorporating that information into our response, we're, we are communicating regularly with schools still about this incident and how we can improve. Um, so we're, we're continuing to move forward. Uh, but I, I can say with confidence that the procedure that the school had in place, that the police department had in place, um, made for an orderly and, uh, and efficient response.
Is it, uh, correct that there were more than a hundred swatting calls made to different schools on the same day?
So we, there were, I, I don't know the exact number, I can tell you that.
It was north of two hundred statewide, right?
Yeah, there were other municipalities within Westchester, there were municipalities in Plutton County, all the way up to Albany, um, so the history of these calls is, is similar. Uh, it's currently being, it's currently still being investigated by the FBI, it's actually centered out of the Boston Field Office, has taken on this investigation. Um, I'm telling out details of school, but they believe this to be a continuation of the pattern that had existed previously, this is not the first time that multiple jurisdictions receive swatting calls um, at the same time. Uh, it, it is, it was unique, it was, there was, um, some information that was in there, and some of the nature of the calls that led us not to, um, let's put it this way, every call is different, every, every situation is different. Um, although we were very well aware that there was, it was very likely a hoax, there was also some information that was given and some things that were said, some practices that the caller did that made us believe, you know what, this might not be, um, this might not be a hoax. Uh, we did only receive one call of it, we would expect we would have gotten more, uh, but again, not to go too deep into the details, you know, the good thing is, so when these types of things happen, it's very important for us to follow our procedures, it's also extremely important for our officers to be thinking, to be perceiving, we don't want anyone to panic. I can, I can say with great certainty that between the students, the staff, the administration, the parents, everyone handled this situation extremely well, there really wasn't a level of panic that went out into this, as we talked about, as Mr. Pepperd mentioned earlier in the, the work session, it's, it's a, it's a sickening, nauseating feeling. We did not experience a rush of parents coming to the schools, we did not experience, uh, some of the other things that have happened in previous um, episodes, and I give a lot of credit to first and foremost, the students who were locked in that building, they all had their cell phones, um, and the parents who knew what was going on, who either saw something was happening, or, or came to know in a short time later that, um, that there was a loose threat of an active shooter incident, and there was not, there was not the overwhelm, as, we could say this way. When we prepare for these things, one of the things that we consider is the fact that we are going to get a rush of people all coming to the scene. We did not experience that, we are thankful for that, um. In the event of an actual critical incident in other jurisdictions, one of the major concerns, one of the major obstacles to rectifying the situation is the onslaught of resources, whether it's parents coming to, to find that, to be with their children, whether it's other police resources. Um, here in Westchester County, we've done a lot of work making sure that people don't self-dispatch, that we have a controlled mechanism for bringing in our resources so that we're not overwhelmed. Well, we, we see pictures from other locations where so many people come, so many vehicles are left in the street that emergency vehicles cameras on. Um, and so we're, we're very grateful, I'll, I'll call out a few, a few other things. So Lieutenant Wallman, uh, serves as one of Westchester County's Mutual Aid Coordinators. Uh, he was here in the village, I was on my way in, Lieutenant Gilmar was on his way in. Uh, Lieutenant Wallman was arriving in the village at this one out. He's done a lot of work as a mutual aid coordinator, basically, Westchester is, has been, over the last few years, broken up into three different zones. The northern part of the county is Zone A, uh, and Lieutenant Wallman is the, the zone coordinator for Zone A, so he sort of has that northern part of the county. So, um, any major mutual aid response, even if it's, you know, a presidential visit to Sarah Lawrence College, or a, a, a large funeral, anything where mutually is gonna be brought in. Jesse has, uh, been at those scenes, um, he's done a ton of work in that, in that area, and he handled himself, and he made this department proud, and recognizing what was gonna happen, he established a perimeter, he called for mutual aid. Um, he did all the things that we hope and expect and train our officers to do, but he did them immediately without thinking, and, and having him there was invaluable towards, um, towards our response.
I would echo that, having seen part of it, so.
Yes, absolutely, um.
Chief, yeah. Could I ask on, on the mutual aid question, so when, when you got the call and, and you, and he, or when he called for mutual aid, did the county say, well, we're sending people to the other schools as well, but they got the same call, or was that part of when you?
That, that was a decision that.
Was that all happening like very fast, I assume, but?
Yes, that was a decision that was made in tandem, uh, Lieutenant Wallman recognized that there would be a need for officers at other schools. Again, you're getting resources coming in, we have a threat, the only, the, 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 the threat is at one school, but we recognize that there is a possibility that other schools could potentially be at risk, it could be a diversion, just because it was quiet here, doesn't mean it's, they aren't trying to go to one-to-one locations. Um, and so in short order, he made sure to dispatch officers, um, they were officers from other jurisdictions to those two locations. Uh, again, I don't wanna go too deep into, the schools made the decisions to continue to intake students at the other locations. Uh, they went into a lockout scenario, is my understanding, at the other two schools. Um, but yes, we, we, in short order, recognized the appropriateness of having resources at those schools.
Thanks.
Um, again, as we discussed, other jurisdictions received these, both the investigation into, the call itself is continuing. Um, and like I said, we are, uh, using the information that we gained from that situation to continue to improve and modify our response uh, in the, in the event of, uh, another critical incident, not just at the school, but anywhere. Um, and like I said, plus, the, the school day did resume, uh, before noon that day, which I think is a testament to, um, to have everything there in, searched, safe, demobilization, so that the, the things return back to normal. It's a critical part of, um, of our response, is making sure that things return to normal as quickly as possible. Any other questions or comments?
One thing I've said to a few people who have been inquired to me is I echo all the things you said, uh, an impressive and well-coordinated event, albeit in a moment when it's, uh, hard to know what to do. Um, but we are fortunate not only to have our own force with qualified professionals, but uh, as compared to lots of places in the world, lots of resources nearby, our mutual aid from our friends and colleagues at Mount Pleasant, but county police are so close, and state police so close, so, um, those are all, uh, elements in a situation like this that, uh, make clear that we are fortunate.
Yes, absolutely.
Although unfortunate that in our country, this is something that we have to worry about.
That is for sure, absolutely.
Um, one of the other things I wanted to touch on, especially, uh, as we come into the springtime, uh, we did have some juvenile activity, I didn't go into the the detail level, but we did deal with, uh, juveniles over the past quarter. Um, as victims, witnesses, and perpetrators, we had a couple incidents, again, not to go into the detailed level, where we had juveniles as perpetrators, in which other juveniles who were either witnesses or victims acted extremely appropriately in the fact that they immediately left the area, immediately notified an adult who called us, uh, or immediately located a police officer in one of these incidents, and incidents happen downtown. Um, kids left the area, immediately found an officer who was out on foot, and in both of those cases, we were able to locate and arrest the juvenile perpetrators of these crimes, uh, two menacing crimes, um, in short order, because most importantly, the kids left the area quickly, they recognized the need to contact somebody, and they passed that information along, so, um, obviously, we don't want, we don't wanna have, um, we don't wanna have juveniles be victims, we don't wanna have juveniles be perpetrators, but, um, these kids were really well-prepared and really thoughtful in their response, again, thoughtfulness and, and preparation going hand-in-hand, and they did a, they did a tremendous job in, in assisting us.
Um, did you respond to any aid or bias crimes in this quarter?
No. Uh, one of the other things that people are probably noticing is we have had an, an expansion or a, um, yeah, I guess expansion is the word I'll go with, of, uh, bicycles. Kids on bicycles in Memorial Plaza and in the area, uh, in general, um, we are aware of it. I have directed Lieutenant Gilmar to, uh, get together with the sergeants and come up with a plan. Uh, just a few weeks ago, was actually in April, but just a few weeks ago, we had an incident right down here at the intersection of Bedford Road and Marble Avenue with, uh, some kids who were on bikes. Um, again, juvenile-related, so not too much information, but our plan is to become proactive and aggressive in this. Uh, I'm bringing this up here at the meeting now because, uh, parents of kids who are sending their, uh, parents who are sending their kids out without helmets face the possibility of, of being cited for that. If kids are riding unsafely, um, we're reserving the right to confiscate bicycles, to ask parents to come in and pick up their kids. Um, you know, we're, we're taking this very seriously, and I just wanna make sure that we say to the public ahead of time, you know, we're going to continually inform the public as to what's going on as, as we develop this plan and, and implement it. Um, but I'm taking this first opportunity to let people know that if you get a call from the police department, you know, it's, it's because we've we, we've seen that there's a safety risk to the behavior of these kids, and we wanna make sure we get out of front of it.
Sorry, I think I don't understand, so what are the, what are the laws or the rules that they're breaking?
Sure, so, uh, so obviously, a, a, a child can't ride a helmet, can't be charged for a traffic violation, of which riding a bicycle without a helmet is. However, the parent can be charged, so if, if my son is riding and he doesn't have a helmet on, and an officer can stop him, the officer gives me the ticket, doesn't give it to my son.
I just learned something, that's the village law?
No, that's a state law.
Wear a helmet on bikes.
I, I, I appreciate that, because I have had to give, I have had to give reminders about that, and I have to to be armed with that additional information.
And the other, the other thing, I, I am downtown almost all the time, um, we've had some kids who have been provocative, bike riders popping.
Yeah.
That's what I was asking, I didn't, I didn't, I just learned that I have to wear a helmet, so I didn't know that in the state.
Well, and, uh.
I know that you do, there's an age.
No, it's for.
Oh, no, it's an adult, okay, under sixty, okay.
We recommend it down there, so, but please do.
Someone's.
Yeah, I mean, they're, technically, they're very skilled riders, that unfortunately, they are picking the wrong place to demonstrate their skills.
So it's showboating, showboating on a bike, showing off popping wheelies.
A little bit, group of kids, you know, they're riding in the middle of the road, riding against traffic.
Got it.
So, you know, it's, it's, so, and, and like I said, we, we can bring kids in, you know, we don't expect that. Again, I don't know if I wanna say too much about this, but what we don't wanna do is create a situation where kids feel like they need to run from the police.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Last thing we want is a kid who's riding in Memorial Plaza to see the police far behind him and decide, I'm gonna try to evade this, and now all of a sudden create a much more dangerous situation, we've always been very careful, when we're dealing, especially with kids, about making sure that we do it in such a way that it is positive, and not necessarily we don't make the problem worse, um, through our enforcement. So that's why, like I said, Lieutenant Gilmar, the sergeants are gonna come up with a plan that is universal, it's not gonna be something that only one officer or one tour or one sergeant pushes out, it's gonna be expected that it goes universally. And to be honest, we've had these types of problems in the downtown area in the past, and as long as we come up with a reasonable solution, opportunities for collaboration, we expect that this is going to be that with some education and maybe one or two instances of making a parent come in and take their kids' bike back, um.
Is that the kind of? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, is that the kind of thing where you communicate, work with the schools occasionally? Cause that seems like, you know, if you come up with a plan or a, a way of messaging that, it seems like the school might be able to help you get that out.
Sure, I mean, the messaging part of it is difficult, I will say that a lot of these kids don't live here in the. don't live here in the village. They don't go to village schools. They're Wesley kids, we have kids who are Chappaquaun, really. Um so it's limited, but you know, we, we will definitely take whatever opportunities we can to message this out, you know, especially on social media. What we really want is the parents to, when their kid goes out, to say to the kid, I don't want you riding in the middle of the street. I want you to follow the rule. I don't, I want you to put your helmet on. Because plenty of these, some of these kids leave and they, when they're riding, their helmet is on their bike, but lots of them leave the house without a helmet.
Mm-hmm.
Um and I've been uh lucky enough to, you know, we have some residents here in town who do presentations about the dangers of riding without a helmet. Uh and they're pretty, pretty shocking impacts can happen when those decisions are made. And listen, my son's fourteen years old. The other day, you want to go on a scooter, and he got very upset when I made him put a helmet on. Um you know, when I rode a bike, I always wore a helmet, um just because.
That's why you're a police chief.
My sister isn't, wasn't ER doctor. She's a general practitioner. She was chief spent time in the ER, and she just said that never, ever, ever, any person on a bike or motorcycle absolutely should be wearing a helmet because it's horrific what can happen to you.
Absolutely. That's what I'm saying. So um so we're hoping that education and cooperation really just lead towards behavioral changes, and we don't expect this to be a large enforcement issue, but like I said, I did want to um let the public know that we are paying attention to this and want to make some changes in that area. All right, on to staffing and overtime. Uh as you see uh here on our list, we'll, we'll have a little bit of information here. Uh the numbers stayed high for the first quarter in twenty twenty-three. Normally, we would see as, you know, less vacation time and things, those numbers could come down. However, that number does not tell the entire story. So we go to the next. Um so again, I say this every time, I'm trying to come up with new and creative ways to understand, to, to be able to explain and um digest how it is that we come up with the overtime numbers that we come up with. Um so here, if you go through on the bottom, different patrol overtime occurs in a lot of different ways. This map talks about the overtime that is incurred for covering a shift for whatever reason, whether it's because, and when the monthly schedule went out at the beginning of the month, we didn't have enough people to cover enough shifts, whether it's because somebody was sick, somebody took a personal day, somebody was on vacation. This talks about patrol overtime in that um tour coverage is what we call it. Uh we're basically, we're having, um we need officers to cover our minimum manpower for whatever reason. Uh and then if you go to the next slide, these are our total overtime numbers. Now, the thing I would like to point out more than anything is, so the blue is, is what you saw in the last slide, the dark blue. That light blue section there in quarter one that was very small in all the other quarters um is what we're calling reimbursable overtime. So when we have utility companies that come in and need to do work, uh to send out here or uh fiber optic running throughout the, uh the community, what we do is once the application comes in, we get the opportunity to review it, and if it is necessary and appropriate for an officer to be there, then we schedule an officer on overtime to be there. What happens is then we, utility company pays us that money back. Now, as Mr. Morrissey and I talk about on a regular basis, there are obviously other costs that are incorporated. We have done our best to bait as many of those costs in and be uh make it a, a, a net zero for the village when we, when we do these things. Um some of these things are variables, some of these things are understood, but we are proactive in making sure that, that we're limited to great as, as, to the extent as great as possible, the financial implication of this being out there. Again, we don't put, it's not every time somebody needs to be in the road that we're putting an officer there. We're making determinations as to where they are, how mobile they're gonna be, you know, an established um work zone is much different than one that moves throughout the village, potentially either up and down one street or uh over multiple streets. So we're assessing that. So if you um, let me see, I haven't, separate slide. Oh, uh so if, let's put it this way, if we did not have any of this reimbursable overtime, which to the best of our ability is close to a net zero for the village as possible, our overtime numbers would be um the lowest they've been in a year. So although, again, that bar graph extends pretty high, but you take that, that light blue section out there in quarter one for twenty twenty-three, we drop down. And the only, obviously, would still be a little bit higher than last year's overtime, but it is not um is not nearly as bad as some of these graphs might make it look. In a sense.
Better, better.
Good.
Not great, but better.
The other thing is, my expectation and my plan is to have an in-depth um uh section regarding the overtime, bless you, of, of fiscal year twenty twenty-three at my next quarterly update. You're gonna let the fiscal year clean up, and then we're gonna go back to a deeper dive into where these numbers are coming from, uh and then potentially, uh if the board is inclined, to talk about uh solutions or at least steps that could be taken.
Okay.
Thank you.
But I'm happy to answer any other questions if there are regarding about overtime as well. All right, personnel and staffing. Uh this past quarter, we saw two, uh two retirements, Sergeant Juan, Detective Sergeant Juan Garcia, Sergeant Tommy Woods. We talked about them at length. Um we are in the process of filling those positions. Um we go to the next slide. Uh Joe Zane has, uh Sergeant Zane has moved from patrol back to the detective division, and uh as we were all here for. Um Pat Leoni was promoted to sergeant in this quarter. Uh at the same time, or not at the exact same time, but uh in, in close proximity, we hired two new officers who are uh working, they have completed their field training, they are out on the road, they are counting towards manpower, and we're very happy to have them. We feel um, we feel very lucky. Uh I said to a couple people that night, uh you know, I felt like a general manager who signed the two biggest free agents on the market, she's gotten great reviews. They have done nothing but impress their field training officers, the other officers, and the members of the public. Um they've already been the subject of, both of them have already gotten letters of commendation from the public, uh and we're very thankful that they chose to uh continue their careers in Pleasantville. One of the other good things that we did, and it's part of one of our goals, is to sort of um one of our goals for this year was really to work on succession planning, show people, give people the opportunity to do things and be part of processes that maybe they weren't part of, and the hiring of both of those two officers included um uh sergeants and uh union members. Uh in the interview process, we think that their insight was invaluable, and we uh wanted to give them the opportunity to sort of go through the process with us, so that was one of our goals, and that's one of the ways that we uh tried to accomplish that. So um our second community service worker position, we expect before the next quarterly update, uh we will be, uh we will have somebody in place. We're currently canvassing the list. We hope that sometime May, possibly in June, we will uh be able to come forward to the board with a recommendation. Um obviously, having two people in that position is beneficial for any number of reasons. There's a number of uh duties that we ask our community service workers to perform, not just writing tickets. So uh having multiple people doing that, obviously, enforcement in the downtown area is critical. Enforcement in the outline areas is critical, not necessarily uh because we like writing tickets, but because everybody needs to know that those laws are enforced, they're enforced fairly, they're enforced reasonably, and so, you know, we hope that uh strong enforcement leads more towards compliance than it does to uh towards tickets. Uh we think we can do that better with a community service worker that will also give us the opportunity to put somebody back on working um on Saturdays, which is obviously a very busy time uh here in the village.
How, how's the whole village doing? It's my quarterly question.
Uh how's the old village doing? I mean, listen.
With parking.
Yeah, but yeah. And we haven't gotten, we've we're comfortable and confident that we've improved the situation up there, but again, you know, there's more feedback that's to be had. I mean, we're happy to, to hear it. I mean, it's been an area of focus, so.
Yeah, I, I, it seems like there, there were tickets uh issued um in in larger numbers than, than in the past, and so I don't know if that'll have an effect on human behavior or not, but uh it's, 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 it's kind of a zoo three nights a week.
Yeah.
I'm not understanding.
Yeah, and, and this is the time of year where usually people start to feel a little more
Yeah.
you know, comfortable coming out and wanting to be out. So, so yeah, well, you know, we definitely welcome, appreciate any, you know, any feedback, but that's, that'll continue to be an area of focus. Um next up, our crossing guards. Again, this is pretty much cut and paste it from last quarter's presentation. Um we always can use that. I'll take this opportunity every chance I get to uh remind the community that we would love to have them as crossing guards. Um if you're available during that time, even if it's just, you know, we would obviously much more prefer to have um to have somebody who's there for the AM and the PM. We'd much rather have somebody who, who can do it every single day, but we would just encourage anybody who thinks that they might be able to do something uh to help us out with that. It really frees us up, gives us the opportunity to do things. This is one of the things that our community service worker does on a regular basis, is uh covers crossing guard, crossing guard posts. Um you know, we train people, and we support them as best we can. Um if there are concerns or questions or problems, we're here to be there, so we would love to just to get as many people in the community as possible to, to raise their hand and, and volunteer to do this. Not volunteer. We're gonna pay them that. Um so training.
It's not a bad gig.
Yeah. Uh training, uh Detective Smith attended our juvenile officer school. It's, it's critical for us to maintain a, a, a large stable of juvenile officers. We just feel it's um the right thing to do, because we do deal with kids so often uh here in the village. And Officer Cassell, again, one of our goals was officer wellness, uh group crisis intervention course, which uh in the wake of a uh traumatic incident, um there's a number of different models that we offer um for our officers. One of them is a group um crisis intervention in which um multiple trained caregivers, maybe not the right word, trained volunteers come in, professionals to debrief and uh assist uh the officers. It has worked for us in the past. When we've had some critical incidents here, that's a, a program that we utilize for our officers, and it was helpful. Uh and so Officer Cassell um provided a particular knack for the um the emotional and uh personal uh struggles that officers might feel like. He's really well-suited to handling these things. He's extremely empathetic, gets very high emotional intelligence. Um so we selected him for that school. We think that was a successful um partnership. Next, please. So uh for the remainder of the, the program, again, interactive as much as possible. We currently have four projects that we're working on um on top of our normal day-to-day routine. The first of which is accreditation. I just want to give you an update on where each one of them is briefly. Uh accreditation. Um myself and Sergeant Berwa have been working. Uh he has become uh an accreditation manager, so he now knows not just um from, you know, he knows from the other side what the state is gonna be looking for when they come down to assess us for, to give us our accreditation. The first step is improving our policies and procedures, and what we're working on right now is to create a calendar. Uh we're breaking the, all of our policies and procedures, of which there's a hundred and twenty-five or so uh down. There's a hundred and forty standards that go into accreditation, so we have to marry up accreditation standards with our policies and procedures. Um we're currently doing that. What we'd like to do is uh within the next few months or so, create a, a calendar. So this way, the public can follow along and see exactly what policies we're gonna be working on, if not a date and time, at least in what order we're gonna do this in, and then potentially get uh the public's input and the feedback on that. So we are, uh as we are improving and working on the policies themselves, we're also trying to basically build this roadmap so the public can follow along uh and be involved when they uh, when they feel it's appropriate. Next. And again, stop me with any questions or concern. Uh body worn cameras. We're expecting to um have our body worn cameras in place sometime this summer. Have them um uh in place is not the right term. Have them in service. Uh we have uh our policy in place. Um and we're looking forward to going through the training, making sure that the officers are comfortable with how to operate the cameras, when to operate the cameras, how to retain and store, and all the other things that go along with it. We partnered with Axon, which was uh basically the company that used to be Tasers, now called Axon. Um the cameras will be uh connected to not only the car, so if the lights go on, the car, the camera comes on, but also uh they have a connection to the taser, so if the taser is drawn by the officer, the camera automatically activates.
Um can you explain how uh access to that footage, like it can, can the public foil that? Is it discoverable in a lawsuit? Like, under what circumstances do people outside of the department see that?
Um my understanding is yes to both of those questions. Those, those things are, those are public records. Um so they are subject to foil. Uh obviously, s- certain situations, I know different departments handle the release of that information differently. Some are are uh you know, in, 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 in the lack of a critical incident, there's many different models on how they release that information. Uh were there to be an incident that comes in, obviously, the managing of tho- those records um is part and parcel to, to the totality of the response and, and how we handle it. Uh next. Our records management system, again, um my thanks to Lieutenant Gil Martin, who has spearheaded this project. He has spent this is not an exaggeration, weeks at the police academy with the thirteen other jurisdictions, which are currently partnering with Westchester County for a, a new records management system. Um Mr. Morrissey and I speak on a regular basis about the costs involved with these things. We've been given some assurances that uh the fact of the matter is, were we to go out and pre- and start a new records management system on our own, we would be looking at easily six figures, significantly into six figures, just for the product itself, and then comes licensing and all these other uh data migration, all these other great costs. Uh the partnership through the county, the county is absorbing. They've, they've made statements, but we haven't put it in paper yet, so um but we are going to recognize significant savings to uh by going through this partnership. Part of the issue, however, is when you do this on your own, you get, they come in and you get to tell them everything you want. So what, one of the things that that Lieutenant Gil Martin is doing is basically working with these other fourteen agencies so that all the decisions that have to be made aren't just made by one agency, they're made by all of us together collectively. So it's a combination of training and also um personalization and customization of the program as, as they are able to do, that matches up with, with what we do and what the other jurisdictions do. So it's, it's time consuming, it is labor-intensive, um but again, we're gonna recognize significant savings, not only in the front end, but also potentially in a few years, uh or for a few years of the maintenance costs that the county has made this one of their IT projects.
Chief, could I, could I go back to body cameras?
Sure.
Second?
Yeah.
I'm just thinking about, is, is this, I have a couple of questions. Is this something that we want the public to know more about? You know, is, is there a, is, is there an aspect of community policing to this? For example, when, when they're about to be rolled out, should we have? I don't know. Should we have an awareness event, or do we want? Is there any advantage to that in your mind? And then a second question I have is, how, how are, how is the police force responding to this? Is everybody for it? Is, is it a mix? What are the emotions? It's, it's kind of a big deal.
Sure, absolutely. It is, it is a um luckily, nobody has as much time as I do, but for people who have all that time, uh it's just, it is a it's viewed at this point as a sea change in the way that we operate.
Yeah.
I would temper that a little bit by saying, for the last ten or fifteen years, we've also always at least should have recognized that there's always the chance that you're being recorded. If you're not wearing a camera, you're still potentially being recorded.
Right.
So um if this had happened fifteen years ago, I think that the, the, the impact to the officers would probably have been greater. I think we all sort of recognize that this is sort of a good thing. Additionally, from other agencies, a lot of um so the old, I think I've said this before in a meeting, the old way that this was perceived was when body cameras come in, it's the administration that wants it, and it's the officers that click back. And then if, for whatever reason, they go away, it's because the administration doesn't want it anymore because it's such a headache, but the officers want to keep them because in the vast majority of interactions, the officers benefit from being recorded. There's a lot of reasons for that, right? The officers know, the officers are, you know, there's, we're trained, you know, we're not dealing with the stress of, of what a lot of people are dealing with. Um but many, many, many more officers have been helped by the footage of, on their body camera than harmed by it. Um so they're concerned about the impacts of it. They're concerned about what it's gonna look like and how we're going to handle it. Um we've worked very cooperatively with uh with the union through this process to make sure that we're hearing their concerns and, and and being responsive to them. Um and to be honest, they, they really haven't asked for they haven't asked for anything completely un- uh outlandish. Uh most of the requests that they've made once they saw our policy were for things that they found in policies in other places. So we're not, our. So we're not, our policy is not going to get a new standard for uh police body care. Uh for your first question, listen, I would I would love the opportunity to do that. I think um I I feel as if the most traction that we're going to get in the in, here's a couple of things. First of all, yes, I think introducing, having the opportunity to let the community know that we're doing this, even though it was part of our police reform commitment, was to examine the body cameras. Having the opportunity to let them know that we have successfully completed this process and they are now out there is a great thing. I feel as if, even lacking that or even in the absence of that, the interactions between the officers and the people who they deal with is going to be critical, right? Oh, just do traffic enforcement, for instance. We can be as proactive as we want about announcing our traffic enforcement and being reasonable and responsible in the way we do it and be but as the officers go out and there moves somebody on a traffic stop, all that goes out of the way. So it's going to be the professionalism, which I am confident in, of the officers wearing the camera to be um understanding the public's potential concerns, which there may be, um to be well-trained in the times when the camera should be on. And there are there are times when we expect and and are okay with the officer turning the cameras off for very specific reasons. Um and so the professionalism of the officers and the and the judicious use of the cameras, I think, is going to to really carry the day. But I, if there's an opportunity to announce to the community that the officers are wearing, I would absolutely take that on too.
Well, we could send out an email and, you know, we could use the usual channels that we use to put out information.
Yes, no, that I think that'd be great.
So the general standard is they're there, they tend to be on unless the officer is doing X, Y, or Z.
So the the expectation is that the officers, when when basically taking police action, we'll have the cameras on.
Okay.
There are certain factors when privacy rights, uh you're dealing with people in certain locations, things like that, where the officer has the ability to turn the camera off. So but in general, we will we will expect that there will be a training period, there will be a a bit of growth. You know, if you're outside the car and you're having a conversation with somebody, it might not be your first instance to remember to turn the camera on.
Right.
Um so we'll understand that it takes some time. Um but we have, you know, we have no intention of of building in a like, we're gonna have to hit the ground running. We're not gonna, we're gonna walk before we run, but we gotta hit the ground running from from day one and make sure that that we are um conveying to the officers and conveying to the public that this is the new, this is the new paradigm we're gonna follow. Thank you. Sure, thank you. Um and then lastly, we just spoke at the work session about our radio communications. Um you know, the the process is going forward. Uh I think Jesse has done a phenomenal job I in spearheading this program. I will say just generally, although the process has taken much longer than we anticipated, we believe that we have benefited greatly from it, not only in cost savings, but also in um the application of it, what we think it's going to look like when when we do um switch over to a new communication system. Uh the fact that MTA is going to improve their network and we're going to get the beneficial shares of that is uh is potentially a game changer. Uh we were, we were confident that MTA was the way to go. We believe that the future of of police communications made the MTA system the most viable system, but now having the ability for such a strong network and having the ability to potentially um cut through a lot of the issues that we've had in the past, we we believe it's it's truly a home run. And again, um Jesse really has taken the bull by the horns, talked to vendors, talked to other police officers, talked to consultants, talked to as many people as possible to make sure that we're being not only proactive and thorough, but also cost-conscious. So that is all I have for now.
I say that's a lot.
Quite thorough.
Very good. All right, thank you.
Well, I'm much thank you for that, chief, and and uh uh I can speak for myself, but I think for the community at large, um these quarterly reports have been a really, really useful outgrowth of the whole police of consideration of the blotter. Uh not only uh does it give everybody a better sense of what's going on, but it uh gives you and your team an opportunity to be better understood the good work you're doing, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right, uh we've been droning on for a long time, let me just make a a couple of announcements, um mostly date-related. Folks uh should uh plan their calendars for Pleasantville Day, which is Saturday, May twenty. Uh and then the following Monday, May twenty-nine, is our Memorial Day service, uh which takes place starting at BRS Parade down Bedford Road to Memorial Plaza. Uh more on that as the date approaches. Uh the Fire Department Parade Friday, June two, and the Music Festival is on Saturday, July eight. So uh it's a big week uh in Pleasantville, big couple of weeks for Pleasantville Day, Memorial Day, Fire Department Parade, and then a month later, Pleasantville Music Festival. PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com has uh the information about this year's lineup and how to get tickets. Um shout out to the many people who uh waited in line to buy tent sites. Uh the annual Tent City Sale happened last weekend, and uh there were a couple of diehard fans of Tent City who actually camped out most of the night in front of Bedford Road. So it felt like, I don't, I don't know if you drove by, you would have thought it was uh Taylor Swift tickets or a new iPhone, I don't know which. But no, it was Tent City tickets. So thanks to all those people uh who who uh love those tent sites. But please, PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com, do you want to report about the?
Yes. So I just wanted to remind people, um there are a couple of banners up, which you may have seen, that um last year we voted in a new law uh which regulates leaf blowers. So from starting May fifteenth, gas-powered leaf blowers um are not allowed until the end of September. Uh you may continue to use electric leaf blowers during that time. Uh so if you hire a landscaper, please let your landscaper know ahead of time, um because it's the responsibility of the homeowner um to do so. If you would like to purchase an electric leaf blower, uh the Climate Smart Task Force, uh thanks to a state grant, is renewing its rebate program. Uh and we are accepting old uh gas-powered leaf blowers, mowers, and weed whackers on May sixth from nine AM to twelve PM at the recycling center. Um and you can find that information on Facebook and other places as well, um or email me if you're not sure. And so that's pretty much that. And then um, oh, so just one more note on that. So the reason we picked May fifteenth is that by then, we hope that all of the spring cleanup is done. So hopefully you are busy taking care of that. I also wanted to mention briefly that last Thursday, the Climate Smart Task Force hosted an energy audit seminar, which was very interesting. We had people from Sustainable Westchester here, we had somebody from uh Bedford who who does, who's a free energy coach, um and really sort of walked us through the whole system of how you get a home energy audit, which is basically you have a professional come to your home and tell you what you could do to make, to save um on heating and cooling in your house, you know, whether it's insulation you need or better windows or whatever. Um and also um walked us through the various rebates and um tax deductions that are available now on the state and federal level, but also we will have a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar rebate attached to energy audits. The the village is offering village residents, um again, through a state grant. So um anybody who's interested in learning more about that, we're gonna have a video of the Zoom that's available on the website, and um I would encourage you to watch it because there's a lot of really interesting information. Yeah.
Thank you for that. Anybody else have announcements?
Oh, my mind.
All right, um any comment from any member of the public on any subject? Let me take a look and see if there are any attendees to raise a hand. I see, I see none. Um Eric, before we go to resolutions, can you just give a quick update on the two disruptive projects? The Con Ed Gas Main Project on Wheeler and Bedford, and then the uh work for the Mandel Road Project?
Sure. So uh the Con Ed Gas Main replaced the project. They are um almost completely off Wheeler Avenue, working away up uh Bedford Road, so they'll go up to Tompkins Avenue. Um they'll have to go back and actually replace the the service lines, and that requires coordination with each business owner. So they, Con Ed has been in contact. That may take time, depending on the willingness of the store owners to cooperate. And Con Ed, from all accounts, have been um very reasonable in working with these business owners and, you know, setting the appropriate hours to do that because it will disrupt the uh service. Um so jumping over to Mandel Road, uh they've all but completed the the sidewalk network now from Washington Avenue to Tompkins Avenue on the north side of Mandel Road, so across from the Jacob Burns. Uh there is one section they left open, uh we have a site meeting tomorrow to finalize um some conduit questions related to the new pedestrian signals that will uh be installed there. And then we'll also discuss tomorrow where they'll jump to next. Um and we'll have more details once that's done. But that was a very critical section of the project because of it impacted so many small businesses. You may remember, we had originally scheduled to do that between um Thanksgiving and Christmas, but the feedback from those store owners was, please avoid the holidays, which we did. So never, never great, I mean, it was a full-fledged construction site, but the work was completed in less than two weeks, which is pretty, pretty impressive.
And really a shout out to the contractors on both of those projects. I think these have been disruptive and difficult projects, but uh they've been managed impressively, so.
Do you know, do you know when the crosswalks will be re- re-stripped or?
So uh I'll I'll bring that up uh tomorrow and and also the center line as well. Uh the contractor uses a subcontractor to do uh line painting, so uh that subcontract that they originally engaged with is now off the job, so they've been scurrying to find someone else. But that's likely to be one of the last items that they do.
Because they have to repay it.
They have to repay.
Oh.
And that's, so what we'll also be seeing, I'm talking to the contractor, luckily, they'll actually look to install the um speed calming medians on up here uh between Tom- uh Tompkins and Washington and then down near Grant. So those will be installed within the next probably month or two.
How um how far from ground are they?
They're mounted, so they're uh
They're like two inches or?
I I forget uh exactly.
It's enough to make you not want to do it unless
Correct.
it's intentional.
Yes.
The pedestrian signal is going to be new, is that going to affect at all the the somewhat incomprehensible auditory?
Great question, yes.
I mean, I think it's great to have something for our, you know, site-impaired residents, but seems like we might improve on that.
I believe it will.
Yeah, okay.
Actually, it's way better than it was, which is is damning with faint crannies.
Yeah. And then um just a couple other things to bring up, the uh mast storm uh on Wheeler Avenue, the new stoplight.
Yeah.
We're gonna get rid of the double red light. Um we're finalizing the design on that, so we'll have the exact location burned up suit. And then across here, um Memorial, Semi Memorial is currently pouring their sidewalk, which will include a bump out, uh which will marry the crosswalk between uh the gazebo and what will be that new pedestrian passageway.
Do we have an estimate of when they're going to clear the scaffolding from the front there?
Probably within the next two weeks or so.
Oh, really? That'd be exciting.
Then, as you know, angle parking will be installed over there.
Right.
Um and uh the bump out um uh will move the center line. So it's really gonna calm Steve through Memorial, Memorial Plaza. And the D-line bus stop will then uh be relocated to that bump out as well.
So a lot of disruptive construction, but a lot of great things going on uh that are are soon, I think, to to uh come to fruition. So uh related but unrelated, I visited uh the Burns the other day to take a look at the work they've been doing. They now have pretty much completed the renovations of theaters one, two, and three. The original theater is now twenty-some odd years old. Uh all new seats, all new carpeting, changed the aisle arrangement in Theater Two to uh uh improve it. And so uh a very nice uh new environment, that a big investment there. So congratulations to those guys. Go take a look. All right, anything else? All right, all did one thirty-six, one thirty-seven, Nicole, let me share my screen.
Result of the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the regular meeting held on April twen- tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second? Minutes are attached, comments or corrections to the minutes? All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approved, one thirty-eight, David.
Result of the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-three is listed below. Nine hundred dollars from Advent Conference to municipal associations, twenty-three hundred dollars from general insurance to village hall utility gas, eight thousand dollars from contingency to police gas diesel, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars from PD Admin Conference to police uniforms, three hundred and forty-nine dollars from PD Admin Conference to police software support, twenty-five forty-one from snow removal outside service to garage software, two hundred and fifty-four dollars from sanitary sewer supplies to sanitary sewer, sanitary sewers overtime, five hundred dollars from street cleaning, gas diesel, the street cleaning overtime, for a total of fifteen six thirty-two. Uh from the water fund, five hundred and sixty-three dollars from water admin software to water distribution hydrants, and three hundred and sixty-seven dollars from water health insurance to water dental vision insurance, for a total of nine hundred and thirty dollars. And the refuse fund, sixty-nine sixty-six from refuse employee retirement to refuse health insurance, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars from refuse employee retirement to refuse Medicare reimbursement, for a total of seven hundred, seven thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Is there a second? Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approved, one thirty-nine, Michael.
Result of the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claim dated April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, covering check numbers one zero six nine six eight to one zero seven zero seven six. The general fund, three hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and fifty cents. From a special fund, four hundred and fifty dollars. The water fund, one hundred and six thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars and two cents. The refuse fund, nineteen thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars, thirty-two cents, for a total of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
I want to ask questions on the payment of claims. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion approved, all one forty.
Result of the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract payment of the claims dated April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three for the fiscal year of two thousand twenty-four, covering check numbers one zero seven zero seven seven through one zero seven zero seventy-nine. General fund, five thousand one hundred and twenty-five, for a total of five thousand one hundred and twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
I like this one better. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion approved, one forty-one, Nicole.
Whereas the village administrator presented a tentative budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and whereas a public hearing was duly held before the Board of Trustees, now therefore be resolved that the village of Pleasantville's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year budget is adopted as follows. General fund expenditures, uh nineteen million, six thousand eight hundred and sixty-one. Special assessments, one thousand two hundred, omitted taxes, seven thousand one hundred and eighty-five. Village, village-wide tax levy, eleven million, seven hundred thousand. General fund non-property tax revenues, uh
Twenty-one million out.
Yeah, village-wide tax levy, read that number again.
Uh I'm sorry, but what did I say?
Eleven million, seven hundred.
Oh, sorry, twelve million, seven hundred thousand.
She's trying to give the taxpayer a break.
General, it was wishful thinking.
Yeah.
Um general fund non-property tax revenues, five million, nine hundred and forty-three thousand and forty-eight dollars. General fund appropriated tax balance, three hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Assessed valuation, one hundred and twenty-three million, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. Tax rate per one thousand dollars assessed valuation, uh that's one oh two points uh four seven five zero. Tax rate percent increase, two point five five percent. Tax levy increase, three point seven four percent.
Is there a second?
Second.
And the detail is all attached in the attachments available to the public at Pleasantville dash O Y dot com. The general fund tax rate, the debt snapshot, fund balance analyses, refuse tax rate, reserve and special purpose funds, F Y E twenty twenty-four expenses, F Y E twenty twenty-four revenue, and the wage schedule.
Is it fair to say, Eric, that the difference in percentage between the tax rate percent increase and the levy increase is us growing the tax base?
That's exactly right.
Okay. For anybody who wants to know why it's important to grow the tax base, because you would have had
Right, your tax rate, your tax rate went up. Right. Your tax rate, your tax rate went up less than the amount we raised went up.
Right.
And congratulations to Noreen Regan, who's here and has been listening to us drone out about many other things. But she is here to see the, the, uh, the birth of the child that has been gestating.
I go for every spring or first quarter when you run the police department.
And likewise to Eric Marisi, the leader of this happy band. So, uh-
Yeah. And all department has deserved a fairly team effort.
We can be friends again.
And we all talk.
And Alyssa, mediator between the, uh, the, the team members. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion approved. One forty-two, David.
Well, so speaking of all these people who did the work, result of the board of trustees hereby approves the following management based salaries for fiscal year ending two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. Eric Kreuzner, police chief, new salary, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. Anthony Carr, superintendent of public works and village engineer, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars. Frederick Morrissey, village administrator and clerk, uh, hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Noreen Regan, uh, treasurer, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars. Robert Hughes, building inspector, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Michael Newman, recreation supervisor, one hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. TBD, deputy treasurer, ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Stephanie Tim Austin, court clerk, ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Alyssa Hoxton, secretary of the village administrator slash deputy clerk, eighty-five thousand dollars.
Is there a second? TBD, deputy treasurer will become clear a little while later when we accept the resignation of Healy Shaw, uh, who's been, uh, done a good job for us, but for personal reasons has found an opportunity to close it at home. So.
It's the RBG of the financial.
All, you're now, we're going to have to canvass it. We got to have someone with these initials.
Yeah. So before we vote, we should update the year to twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Yeah.
That is true, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good catch. Uh, all in favor?
It's unretired.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion approved. Michael, one forty-three.
Result of the board of trustees hereby approves the following water rates for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four for residents, a rate of sixty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents per one thousand cubic feet. For non-residents in district, eighty-six dollars and fifteen cents per one thousand cubic feet. For non-residents, one hundred and one dollars and twenty-seven cents per thousand cubic feet. Um, for bulk sales, the pace residential rate plus the NYC raw water costs. For the cottage school, the residential rate less the NYC raw water costs.
Is there a second?
Second.
These numbers are
two percent, they represented two percent increase over, uh, this current fiscal.
And no change in the ready to serve.
Correct.
Right. That's correct. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Motion approved. One forty-four.
Results of the board of trustees hereby approves the refuse rates for the fiscal year of two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. Pass files. Does that, should that be?
Yes, should be twenty-five.
Okay. Each convenient unit, three hundred and sixty-one, sixty-seven cents. One family residence, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-three cents. Two family residents, seven hundred and twenty-three and thirty-five cents. Three family residents, one thousand eighty-five and two cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
This represents no increase over the current fiscal.
Right.
All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approved. One forty-five.
Whereas sealed bids were advertised in the official village newspaper and received on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three for the tree removal trimming and stump grinding. And whereas bids were received as for the following and reviewed by the superintendent of recreation parks, uh, bitter Alpine Tree Service Inc. Tree Removal Daily Rate, two thousand four hundred. Emergency hourly and stump grinding rate, three hundred and fifty. Uh, Dom's Tree Service Incorporated has a tree removal daily rate of five thousand, four hundred and eighty and an emergency, emergency hourly and stump grinding rate of eight twenty-two. Eastern Landscape Contractors, four thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven and twelve cents for the tree removal and six hundred and sixty-three and twenty-one cents for the emergency, um, hourly stump grinding rate. New England Property Maintenance Incorporated is two thousand dollars for the tree removal daily rate and three hundred for the emergency hourly and stump grinding rate. Now therefore be it resolved that the board of trustees of the village of Pleasantville hereby awards the bid for the tree removal trimming and stump grinding to New England Property Maintenance Incorporated to begin July first, twenty twenty-three, uh, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a memo from the recreation superintendent to inspect. Appears that we have gotten a competitive bid. All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approved. David, one forty-six.
Result of the board of trustees in accordance with village law, authorizes the village treasurer to levy unpaid water rents to the two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four tax roll.
Is there a second?
Second.
An inefficient way to borrow money. Please pay your water bill. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion approved. Michael, one forty-seven.
Result of the board of trustees hereby authorizes the mayor to sign the tax warrant for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. I will do it. Wasn't clear that I was going to get a second. One forty-eight, ball.
Result of the board of trustees hereby accepts the resignation of recreation supervisor Laura Vaughn Theerstein, effective June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Attached is Laura's resignation letter. Uh, we wish her the best. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion approved. One forty-nine, Nicole.
Result of the board of trustees hereby accepts the resignation of Sydney Dawson, Recreation Assistant Panther Club, effective April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. The resignation letter is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approved. One fifty, David.
Result of the board of trustees hereby approves a request from Jack Tobin, one oh eight Sarals Lane, to hold a block party and thereby close Congress Street to Crawford Street on Saturday, May sixth, twenty twenty-three, from eleven AM to nine PM. Request attached.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Congress between Sarals and Crawford. Should we clarify that?
Yes.
Thereby close Congress Street between Sarals and Crawford.
I accept that as a mandate.
All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approved. Uh, then one fifty is a duplicate number here, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So everything should be advanced by one?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is one fifty-one, uh, formerly one fifty?
Okay. Result of the board of trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to to enter into an agreement with Fun Time Amusements for Rides and Amusements, the twenty twenty-three Pleasantville Music Festival contract attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Kids area at the music festival. Buy your tickets now. Pleasantville Music Festival dot com. All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approved. One fifty-two, Paul, the former one fifty-one.
Result of the board of trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign a sponsorship agreement with E N T Analogy Associates for the two thousand twenty-three Pleasantville Music Festival.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great news. Thank you to E N T Analogy for, uh, signing on to assist. All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approved. One fifty-three, formerly one fifty-two.
Result that the board of trustees hereby offers is the donation of two Pleasantville Music Festival tickets for select human services.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approved. One fifty-four, formerly one fifty-three.
Result of the board of trustees hereby authorizes the mayor to sign a proclamation making April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three Arbor Day in the village of Pleasantville.
Is there a second?
Second. Is this a new thing?
Shall, no, we, we've done it every year.
Oh.
Shall we have a vigorous debate? All in favor?
I'm in favor.
Hi. Motion approved. Happy Arbor Day. I will sign it. Uh, Michael, one fifty-five, formerly one fifty-four.
Result of the board of trustees hereby authorize the village administrator to sign an agreement with Empire A V L L C for staging services for the twenty twenty-three Pleasantville Music Festival.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, a new player, uh, longstanding, uh, provider of stage and sound equipment. Aces decided they weren't in a position to do it this year. We went out to bid and we look forward to working with Empire A V. All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approved. Ball, one fifty-six, formerly one fifty-five.
Result of the board of trustees hereby accepts the municipal separate storm sewer systems, M S four, annual report. For the report, here in March, now, two thousand twenty-three, as prepared by a superintendent of public works. The public access to the report available on the village website, W W W Pleasantville dash New York dot com.
Is there a second?
Second.
The annual requirement for us to assess infiltration and inflow, uh, into the stormwater system. The much, uh, the much reviled eye and eye. Um, all in favor?
Hi.
I motion approved. Nicole, one fifty-seven, formerly one fifty-six.
Result of the board of trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign a demand response participation or authorization for the purposes of N Y I S O emergency demand response program grid rewards for the following village on buildings. Oh, we had an item on the work session where we were going to explain this.
Yeah, we could do that now.
Here's our moment. Finish your resolution of the-
So, um, Alyssa, you can chime in as well, but-
Finish the resolution.
Oh, okay. One, Lake Street Pool Building. Two, Village Hall, eighty Wheeler Avenue. Three, D P W Highway Garage. Four, Recreation Center, forty-eight Marvel Avenue. Five, Clinton Street Center. One, eight Clinton Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
Yeah, so, um, you guys hopefully remember uh, when we rolled out the campaign for grid rewards last year. Hopefully you have it on your cell phone.
I do.
Um, so, um, this allows the municipality to participate in grid rewards as well, which means that for each of these buildings, um, we will get alerts that, you know, we, we try to minimize or reduce somewhat our consumption of electricity during peak demand events in the summer. And if we do so, then we get a check at the end of the year for participating in this program. Um, it's pretty much the same concept as it is for an individual, but there's a, a third party that's involved as well. Do you want to explain that part of it, Alyssa?
Our accounts are through our Con Edison, but they're with N I B U. So we had to send our N I B U accounts to Con Edison for them to be able to track our accounts. So we are in the process of that, but they need this in order to do that.
Um, but it's pretty straightforward. It's just another thing that we can do to reduce our energy consumption. And it earns us a little bit of money back. So-
The savings was like twenty-five hundred dollars here for these buildings.
Okay.
Potentially more. I, I had a chat with the mayor of Hastings, who I think they generated it more significant saving than that. Maybe I'm remembering it wrong, but anyway, it's a good thing to do nonetheless. And also a good thing for homeowners to do. Uh, you're not required to do anything, but if you're able to reduce your, your, uh, demand at peak hours, you're rewarded for it. So.
Exactly.
All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approved. One fifty-eight, formerly one fifty-seven.
Result of the board of trustees hereby accepts the resignation of Adrian Rivera, court attendant, effective June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Cleaning up. The records, all in favor?
Hi.
I motion approved. One fifty-nine, formerly one fifty-eight.
Result of the board of trustees hereby appoints Anthony Carr, superintendent of public works, to be permanent status, effective April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Anthony Carr, our village engineer and superintendent of public works, was hired, as all of our employees are, on a proprietary basis uh, that could have extended up to fifty-two weeks. No cause to extend it up to fifty-two weeks. He's been doing a great job for us. We're pleased to establish him in permanent status. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion approved. Uh, one sixty, formerly one fifty-nine. Ball.
Result of the board of trustees hereby accepts the resignation of Hallie Shaw, deputy treasurer, effective May sixth, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
We will miss Healy, uh, but she found an opportunity that was a whole lot easier to commute to than coming here. Uh, fully understand it. Uh, we look forward to her regular visits. And as a result, have assigned her position, the title T B A.
TBD.
TBD, I guess. Yes. All in favor? I motion approved. Nicole, one sixty-one, formerly one sixty.
Result of the board of trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign a proposal from Bloom Electric Incorporated for professional services not to exceed twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars related to the twenty twenty-three Pleasantville Music Festival. The proposal is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bloom, uh, did this for us last year and we're happy to see them return. All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approved. David, one sixty-two, formerly one sixty-one.
Whereas the village Pleasantville Board of Ethics has reviewed the village Pleasantville Village Code of Ethics, chapter fourteen of the village code, and recommended certain amendments to sections three, four, and five of the village code of ethics to clarify certain provisions of the village code of ethics to provide guidance to village employees and officers concerning potential conflicts of interest. And whereas the village of Pleasantville Board of Trustees has evaluated the amendments proposed by the Board of Ethics and considering, and is considering an amendment chapter fourteen, section three, four, and five of the village code. And whereas the local law in many chapter fourteen's section three, four, and five of the village code was introduced to the village board of trustees on April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. And whereas the proposed action is type-two action pursuant to the state, New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, C I P R A, no further environmental review is required. And whereas the village board of trustees is fully familiar with proposed local law, now therefore be resolved, the village board of trustees and the village of Pleasantville will hold a public hearing on May twenty twenty-three at eight P M at Village Hall, eighty Wheeler Avenue, Pleasantville, New York, and via video conference, which will include opportunities for interested members of the public to provide written and oral comments on the proposed local law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
I have Eric Gordon here, um, village attorney. Should anybody have any questions or want a summary?
There was one passage I had a question about.
Eric, are you there?
Yep, I'm still, I'm here. Yep.
Um, so it was M, it was the no officer or employee shall engage in conduct which will raise a concern that he or she may be engaged in acts that create an appearance of impropriety based on the judgment of a reasonable person. So that seemed very broad to me and I was wondering what the rationale behind that was.
So the thinking of the members of the, um, board of ethics was that there should be a provision within the within the ethics code establishing, you know, that, that, that sets forth parameters where a, a board member or a commission member may have stated an opinion on a prior application. Really wouldn't be applicable to the, the village board, but more the, um, the land use boards, or there's some indication that there's, you know, that a board member has a previous opinion about something or has stated a previous opinion or has more than a financial interest, I guess, was the, was the, was the, um, was the thought of the members of the board, John, uh, John Nona and, um, Bernie Gordon, who are the two members on the board. They wanted to establish something other than just a direct financial interest that would give board members notice that you know, if, if you have some other type of interest in a, in a um, in an action that's being taken by your board of commissioners or you're an employee who's got some other interest other than a financial interest, that that could be considered a conflict of interest. And we, we went back and forth regarding the wording for, um, quite some time, you know, exchanged, you know, numerous drafts on it. And we thought that this was sort of the, although broad, it would give a, an individual, you know, it would be enough to give individuals an understanding, um, you know, to get an opinion from the ethics board of what was and what was not, what was, what would be and what would not be permitted. Um, if it was based on this reasonable person standard. But it was really they're putting something other than financial interest, which is what the, the ethics code primarily focus on, focuses on.
Focuses on, yeah. Um, I'm not sure I would have been able to read that into it just based on the text itself. Um, I mean, I don't know how much that matters, but it, it gives me a little bit pause that, that it seems vague and, and broad and, and subject perhaps to, um, a wide range of interpretation. I'm just putting that out there. I don't know.
Yeah, I think ethics, I think ethics codes necessarily you know, give themselves to a broad range of interpretations, but the, I mean, look, it's up to the, the village board is the ultimate legislative authority. This was the recommendation by the board of ethics, um, to include, you know, to include a provision. So they thought it was important that the ethics code include this type of provision um, that could sort of encompass more than just a financial interest. And that's really was the, the, um, that really was the purpose of it.
Okay.
So I, I had a question about, I, I was confused by the same language that, uh, Nicole was. This is, this is Michael Pepperd. And I guess, I'm, I'm trying to so a concrete example or two might help me understand what they have in mind, what, what non-financial entanglements uh, we're being warned against. Because it's a very, we're, we're in a very, very small place. So everybody knows everybody.
Right, yeah. It's, yeah. I think that the, the, the example that came up was if you had a zoning board or- I think that the, the, the example that came up was if you had a zoning board or a planning board member and, and, and look, necessarily, it's not, doesn't necessarily apply the same way to elected officials. Or you have an employee who has stated an opinion on something, uh, on, on a project or a development or, um, a position regarding a, a statute of some sort that's being analyzed or being, or under consideration by that board. I think there was the sense from both, um, Mr. Nona and Mr. Gordon that, you know, that could create an appearance of impropriety based on, you know, some kind of personal interest in this situation, not necessarily financial, but just an interest that you're against something or for something, and that board member, you know, should necessarily recuse themselves if they have that interest. Um, that was.
At all. Wasn't there also some concern about the question, for example, where a land use board member, um, might or might not elect to recuse themselves on a matter that affects their neighborhood?
Right, yeah, exactly, that's exactly, that's it as well. Like if they're, if they're, have a proximity to a property or their, one of their kids, uh, or one of their relatives have a proximity to a property, that could be, you know, considered a conflict of interest.
Yeah. It just, it just extends so far. I mean, you, you, people have many friends, their kids have many friends, their kids are on teams with people who.
I don't see that, that comes into play. I mean, ju- just, just for example, if you, again, we don't have any such circumstance that I'm aware of, but whatever, you have neighbors who are, are in conflict over some aspect of something and that neighbor seeks a variance for some subject, then a member of the zoning board is known to be in conflict with that person. For example, that would be a circumstance where you likely should recuse yourself.
Yeah, I just, I, I mean.
It extends very far. I mean, I, people, people have all kinds of interactions with people around town every single day that might leave them feeling, uh, like, oh, I don't have a positive feeling about that person.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that's a different level. I mean, I, I can say, having been at this for quite a while and having been a former member of the planning commission, and before that they were judge review board, um, I've recused myself a small number of times, very small, uh, but, uh, never have felt as though, um, it was hard to figure out whether I should. So.
So let's say, uh, here's a hypothetical. Let's say Michael goes to a particular pizza place every weekday night, and they come before the board to ask for a zoning variance to allow for an extra parking space or something like that. Is he supposed to recuse himself based on that?
I don't think that would rise. I think it take, you know, going to a particular pizza place doesn't necessarily, if that person socially came to your house frequently and the owner of the restaurant was a personal friend who came to your house frequently and dined with you and you, you know, you went to events with them. You know, I think then you're skirting to, uh, to a different situation. Again, a lot of it comes down to when I speak with board members who ask me, oh, do I have it? I said, look, does this impede your ability to act, um, without bias or to act impartially in reviewing this application? I think a lot of it comes down to your, your personal judgment in these situations. Again, this provision was put in to, uh, you know, mi- put employer, employees and board and commission members on notice that there was more than just these financial interests that need to be taken into account when deciding whether there's a an appearance of, of impropriety that may require you to recuse from consideration of a particular matter. That's really where, why this comment came into play.
I guess, like, if I'm sensing correctly the question that my two fellow boardmates have asked, it's more the question of, you, you've stated as an appearance of impropriety, but the question is whether there, there is an interest, a non-financial interest that creates, uh, the potential for the person's judgment to be affected, right?
Right.
If I, couldn't we say that?
That, I, I, I think if we could come up with language that the, um, that the village board members believe is, um, you know, is sort of more succinct or, you know, or, or less susceptible to interpretation, I'm all for that.
Yeah, you know, that, that a reasonable person could, uh, a, a reasonable person would believe would affect the the member's judgment or, you know, whatever, a, a non-financial interest that could affect somebody's judgment.
And we recognize also that if a member of any board, uh, feels that an area is gray or feels confident that there isn't an issue but wants ratification, they can seek that Ethics Board advisory opinion to get group speak on it.
I know, of course, but the, the law should always speak to you too as well, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, for me, I don't have a problem with the spirit of the law. Like, I completely understand the intention behind this. It's the letter of the law that I'm struggling with here. Um, and the potential for the letter of the law to be misinterpreted. And I just feel like there's a, a a real possibility for misinterpretation, not by the, you know, current Ethics Board, but by people potentially further down the line.
Well, and especially since we have developers, we have people against development, et cetera, it's very easily conceivable that people may have an interest in pushing others out of a voting position on any particular issue. So it's not, I don't think this is a theoretical argument at all.
No, it's, it feels to me like something that could be abused. I mean, I'm, you know, trying to.
So would the board prefer that we work on suggested language, come back and then schedule, uh?
This is a lawyer.
We, we.
No, it's your process.
But I mean, I recognize, just, just, just to be clear, that, uh, as Eric already reported, that two members of, of the Ethics Board were seeking a third right now, uh, put under inquiry, are John Nona, former mayor and now county attorney, and Bernie Gordon, former mayor, also an attorney. Um, and both of them, uh, uh, members of past boards. Bernie was the chair of the planning commission for many years as well. And I do think part of his thinking, uh, uh, reflected some experiences he had had in those roles.
Um, Paul, what do you think?
I still think that I'm still more comfortable with us getting some more language. I do think that the position that we're in and to be able to possibly, like, you, you stated in the past, as I've all stated, to be able to utilize this in, in some way kind of make us lose our ability to, to vote, just because we might, we're such a small town, we're so connected between the schools, between the buil- businesses and all this different stuff, that I do think that I, I wouldn't say it's directly trying to limit us, but the fact that these amendments are happening at a time when there's so much going on within the village, I do think that it warrants for us to revisit a little more language.
Is it just that clause that folks are concerned about? Or, or even ju- just what, what the, what the, what they're trying to prevent?
What more specifically? I mean, the bottom line, if you read our current vote, it's, it's purely dollars and cents.
Because that's one that is more easily provable, right?
Well, I mean, even that can get into gray area. What, what is your, right, but whatever.
What, what is a financial interest is sometimes open to, is it often a concern of interpretation?
As, as you can imagine, there are, uh, there have, and we've had very, very few circumstances where anything has gone to the Ethics Board, but there have been moments when, when, um, something has gone to the Ethics Board frequently by the, by the official is or herself, um, uh, in order to get a, a reading on it. But just for example, we've had moments where, uh, the the actions of a board member, uh, uh, appeared to be seeking public support for opposition to something when they had not sought public support for opposition or, or approval of something else. So that felt like, okay, you're acting differently from the way you have acted before because you have a particular in- interest in seeing something squashed. Wasn't a financial matter. You know, but tho- those kinds of moments where is that something where the public or the applicant says, well, I'm being be treated differently?
So, okay, right, that.
Well, it totally makes sense. The issue is just how it could be used in the other way.
Right, so I, I could, um, if we, if we hypothetically want to, um, bury the electrical wires on Wheeler, let's say, for aesthetic reasons.
We do hypothetically want to.
Right, but then, but then would you as a
Very hypothetically.
You as a business owner on Wheeler have to recuse yourself from that vote because it affects your view out your business window? Well, it seems like it would. But by this language, it seems like it would.
If you said you didn't previously agree with doing that on another street.
[laughing]
I, I think the, the, the reality here, and maybe what Bernie and John have already been through, is that, um, an effort to draw, to find a distinction in the language inevitably fails because of the million different ways that this could evolve. We've just all voted on the village tax rate and we're all going to pay those taxes. He. In the end, we wouldn't recuse ourselves because we have a personal interest in paying more or less taxes if some member of this board appeared to be arguing in the view of many, uh, for, for gutting the village, uh, uh, budget because they don't want to pay the taxes and they're going to leave even a year and a half, that might be, you know, uh, create a circumstance where you, you could not, the public could not reasonably believe that you were behaving outside your own personal interest, right?
Yeah, but I think this language does create some situation for a reasonable person could um, ask for somebody to be removed to from a vote that we might reasonably want them to be part of.
Well, that would have to be ratified by the Ethics Board in order to achieve that.
Yeah, I just, it just feels like anything that's going to be village code has to rise to a certain standard. Like, I, I think that we're all in agreement about the intention behind this.
Right.
So like, um, but.
What would you say? That's the question. Do you have a thought of how to recast that clause?
You have, are there other?
Sure, honestly, I'm, personally, I'm not sure that, um, there's a version of this that I'm going to be happy with, but, but I'm open to the possibility.
Or, or more?
No, just that clause. The rest of it I'm totally fine with.
Yeah.
Um, I, you know, you know, without being too broad, like, it, it makes me think of all these, like, circumstances in public life where, you know, cer- certain things are codified by law and certain things are, um, more a matter of convention or, you know, of unspoken standards and what we've seen, you know, we've seen in, in national politics times where you kind of wish things had been codified by law, but there are reasons why that's not always the case, right? Um, and one of those reasons is that the, the law can be abused if it's not um, clear enough. So that's, that's just, that's where I'm coming from with this, but I'm, I think if we wanted to give a stab at rewriting it, or I feel guilty putting this back on John Nona and Bernie Gordon, it seems like they've already, uh, this has already given them some trouble, but.
I think the board, yeah, I think the board gave some language that, I, look, I don't believe, I don't think Mr. Nona and Mr. Gordon would object to trying to narrow it. I, I, you know, I think they would, they would be okay with that. I think they necessarily wanted it to be somewhat broad because they felt that there were, they, that, as, as the, uh, mayor said, you can't cover every situation. I think the idea of, um, sort of spinning it around where a reasonable person would believe, you know, would impact the Board of Commission Member's judgment, something to set, to the extent to the level it would create an appearance of impropriety, something, you know. I like that language that somebody, I forget who had said it on the board to, tonight, but
Yeah.
there may be a way to sort of spin it around rather than just in the judgment of a reasonable person, where, where you say a reasonable person would believe that it would impact the Board of Commissioner's judgment. Um, you know, to the level that it creates an appearance of, of impropriety. I think that may, that may, that may narrow it a little bit. I, I don't know how the board feels about that, um, that language.
Okay, so, I mean, that's okay by me. Uh, do you think we should go ahead and post a public hearing with the language modified as you just described, or should we table this and?
Well, I mean, we could, we could, we could, as long as you have the, uh, the, the language on your desk, um, that, you know, with more, more than ten days prior to the public hearing. I don't know when you were thinking about setting the public hearing on this. That's the question, I guess, so.
Well, it's going to be from May eighth.
May eighth.
So the.
That gives us a few days to finalize the language, or you can hold off and we could set the public, you could set the public hearing.
Yeah, why don't we make it the next one?
Okay.
May twenty-two.
We could do that, and then we can make sure we have the language, and we could probably, we could run it by, uh, Mr. Nona and Mr. Gordon as well.
We certainly have to engage them on it, right?
Yeah.
Makes sense?
Yeah.
All right.
And if, if they could provide us, you know, a few concrete examples that we can think with, uh, it would, it would very much help me understand what they're trying to prevent.
Or maybe we should have a work session with them as Zoom session or whatever.
Yeah.
Have we had any other changes to ethics over the last five years?
No.
I don't remember. It's, I am really curious about.
Ancient.
I mean, typically in, in kind of workplace ethics, uh, you know, mod- learning modules, you get concrete examples. Like, you can do this, you can't do this, you can't do this, you can't do this, right? Uh, and e- just, just to help people think.
Yeah, no, it'd be good.
All right, so maybe we have a work session with them, but, so we can reach out to them. All right, thank you, Eric Gordon. Uh, but we're going to go ahead and post the public hearing for May twenty-two instead of May eight.
Right, and I think everything would be helpful to have a, you know, possibly a work session on this at the next meeting where
Yeah, right, and then we can be sure.
Or Mr. Nona or Mr. Gordon can, can maybe appear by Zoom and we can.
Yeah, we have captured their thoughts and both of those guys are guys with a long history thinking about these kinds of things, so. Okay, so, uh, we moved it and seconded it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the mover and the seconder agreed to change the date, May eight to May twenty-two? Whoever.
Who was the mover and seconder?
I think it's last.
Whoever you were, you agreed?
Aye, yeah.
Yes, okay. Uh, so we're going to post that public hearing for May twenty-two and we'll have a work session in the intervening moments. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved. Is there any new business anyone wanted to bring up? Now, or any comments from any member of the public? We have outlasted every member of the public as far as I can see here. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, good evening. Thank you all, any of you who watched, uh, the tape. We will see you again on Monday, May eight.